We are recording.
All right. Good evening.
Thank you. Yeah. Of course. Again, thank you all for inviting me tonight and happy Valentine's Day to everyone. Appreciate you coming and being here tonight. I just want to give you a quick overview of some of the work we've been doing in the math department. A little bit of past history as to where we, how we got to where we are, some of the work we've some of the evolution of our classes over the past few years. And then a little insight as to what we've been looking at and working on this year and kind of some ongoing work and where we're headed. So. First things. Maybe. So a little bit about those math pathways that we've been looking at really expanding for our students and trying to meet the needs of all of our students as they prepare for after high school. Some of the instructional strategies we've been digging into in order to help help our students push themselves to think deeply. The ongoing work focused around two of our courses, pre-core math and our core math too, as well as our four-year math experience. And then an invitation if anyone's around next week to come and join our math meets that we're hosting and celebrate a little bit of our students. All right, so we can jump to the next one. So a little bit of kind of past, we know that right now, right, as, as the ever-changing landscape of education and what students need to be prepared for college is evolving, we know it's more than important than ever. Our students have a really solid foundation in mathematics. The research is showing that those base foundational skills of algebra are really, really critical. So a little bit of kind of where our students are getting that and how we've tried to meet the needs. Math is a pretty sequential and cumulative subject where students build off of past skills. So it's somewhat expected that our past sequence might be pretty linear. As you can see here, in the past, most of our students would come in either at pre-core or at math one or two and follow this pretty linear sequence, ending up after their third or third year here with finally some choice to take intro to calc or pre calc. How far along this kind of linear trajectory students would get depended on what they came into us with. In our core one, two, and three path, it's an integrated approach, as I'm sure you're aware, where we mix algebra and geometry together as in a way that really is how mathematics is approached in the, in outside of school. We never have a problem that's just an algebra one problem, or this is just a geometry problem. And it's really teaching students to kind of approach with an integrated lens, so they're trying to identify what do I need, what tools do I, do I have, and how can I go at this? CPM is our, our supporting tool and resource for that, as well as a guide for kind of how that curriculum flows. Knowing that this path didn't give our students very much option for choice and voice. We knew we needed to increase those options. We did choose to offer a stats class and an AP stats class, as well as a financial algebra class. And you'll see in this next slide, although it was well-intentioned, it really just kept that choice at the third year, moving into their fourth year, students didn't have any choice prior to that. So it was very well-intentioned. We were looking to meet the needs of our students. But unfortunately, it fell a little short of that. Financial algebra was originally offered as an alternative to Core Three, but it became a kind of terminal path where students didn't have an option for something to take after that. So it fell again to that fourth year of math. The only choice that students have, which is always one that I love to encourage, is to double up in math, and that wasn't necessarily meeting the needs of all the students and what they were looking for. So to tackle this issue, we kind of came at it on a two-pronged approach. One was to increase flexibility in the order that our students were able to take courses, as well as to increase the opportunities for students to reach a college-level math. And to really tailor what those, those paths could look like to meet the needs of not just the students who are looking to get to a calculus course, but also to other paths. So you'll see in this next slide how we worked on our financial algebra curriculum. It's no longer offered as a terminal course. We redesigned it so that it prepared students for a statistics course, which we were offering as a fourth year, but it also, we've worked with that curriculum to ensure that if students want to, they can take a financial algebra class, say as a junior, and now move back into a Core Three. We've found actually a number of students have taken this opportunity and the feedback from them has been wonderful. They've, you know, may have struggled a bit in the kind of traditional format of a math class where it's math content and then the application after they've learned that. They've found that in financial algebra, financial algebra really tips that paradigm on its head. So instead of studying the content and then looking at the application, we look at the application first. So it's looking at the stock market, or it's looking at credit, it's looking at investing, and then using that to drive the math that we learn and to, and study. So that course has been offering students a new approach to math, one that's really grounded in the, the concrete application, and students are solidifying their algebraic skills from Core Two in there, as well as being exposed to some of the algebraic skills from Core Three. So when they've transitioned back into that kind of left-hand path, they're finding far more success in there. It's been a really, it's been a great opportunity for students to kind of change up the order in which they've done these courses, but still again focused mainly on the calculus as an outcome. So the second thing we did is to look at our statistics course. You'll see in this next slide, we have a whole lot more going on. So in the past, we had designed a statistics course. We had statistics and AP stats. Those two classes had a lot of overlap in competency and content, and because of that, you know, one was at a deeper level. It was a bit faster paced in the AP curriculum, but it covered a lot of the same content. For that reason, students didn't go from statistics into AP stats. So again, statistics, for all intents and purposes, was kind of a terminal course. It didn't offer students an opportunity for something to take after, and that limited their choices. So what we did in trying to increase the availability of AP statistics for students, as well as an increase in statistics in general, we were getting more and more feedback from students that they wanted to be able to, to get a better foundation for stats before leaving here, especially students who are interested in our social sciences and, and a lot of the humanities are also. My own calculus, love of calculus aside, data science is a class I think every one of us could benefit from taking, and if there was one course I think we could require at the high school, it would be data science. So I'm really excited about this class. When we designed it and decided to completely revamp the statistics, the idea here was that we give students a really solid and challenging experience in statistics and looking at big data, also while preparing them to engage successfully in AP statistics. So while the left-hand path here used to be where the vast majority of our students would go, that kind of eye on calculus, and it still is for a lot of our students, the path that they choose to take. We have more and more students engaging in kind of the right-hand two paths here, where they're ending with a cumulative experience in statist, in statistics, whether it's data science is their fourth year, or data science and AP stats. You'll also see that anything that's kind of at a common level are courses that students can double up on. Again, always something I would love for them to do. But we really are trying to enable our students to be able to take that challenging course load, to challenge themselves while they're here, show whatever institution they're looking to go to after here, that they are up for that challenge, they're taking a rigorous course load, all while allowing them to tailor that to really what their interests are after school. I would love to share a little bit more about our data science class. It's really, really exciting. On our next slide, you'll see a little bit about this course. And although it was born from a desire to find another path for our students to AP stats, to that college-level statistics, we found it provided us a really, really exciting opportunity to dig in and, and design a, a course with completely different take on mathematics. This course is designed to give students an experience of what it is to be a data scientist. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation actually has been quoted as saying that ninety percent of the world's data has actually been produced in the last two years, and that explosion of information is what we refer to when we talk about big data. The interesting part is that quote is actually three years old now, so you can only imagine, and we see it all the time, but we can only imagine the need for data scientists is even greater. This course is focused on what it means to make sense of the data around us. The curriculum we're looking at and that we're using is from mathematician Joe Bowler out of the, excuse me, out of Stanford University, and U cubed. The course is really focused on, it's project-based and theme-based, where students are kind of going through this cycle of using curiosity to examine and look for patterns in pretty everyday things, starting with everyday things and getting far more complex. But looking at not only their analysis skills, so statistical analysis, but also through this, they're learning programming, they're learning Python, Google Sheets, Tableau, Data Commons, and they're really using the technology that data scientists use in analyzing these big sets of data. So students are getting the statistics and all of that background, as well as the technology, which is really an exciting opportunity for them, and it's a far more authentic use of the technology, so that's been super well-received. They understand, they develop an understanding of how to collect data, statistically analyze it, and then, what might be most importantly, how to communicate that to others and make evidence and database arguments. At the end of the course, they have a great portfolio that they can use to showcase these new abilities and to bring with whatever fields they go into, whether it be calculus, or humanities, or other SEM fields. The feedback so far, so this was our first year offering data science, and we have three full courses, so it's been super well-received by our students. When it was a statistics course, we oscillated back and forth between one or two classes per year and one AP stats class, and we have a full AP stats class this year, as well as three full data science. So we're really seeing the student interest play out. And the feedback has been phenomenal from the kids. I have one quote from a student saying, "It's like a totally new approach to math. It's like nothing I've ever taken before." They're really seeing how data is all around them and how they can be creative and how they use data to tell a story, while still being truthful in that story that they tell. We all know the stat, but you can find a statistic to support anything, right? So the other thing that's been really powerful, so we have students in this class, some who are doubled up in AP Calc and taking data science, and others who have just finished Core Two and are taking data science. And what's been really, really powerful is we have students who math may not have been their favorite subject for three years, and they're in this class, and they're having a really positive experience with math to finish out their time here, and seeing how they can actually see themselves in mathematics, and it's not just this class they had to check the box to get through. So a little bit, we have a couple examples of some student work on our next slide. So this is the example of one project from the first unit, which was to really get students kind of steeped in that idea that data is all around them. So they were asked to gather data for two weeks on something from their everyday life. It could be anything. They looked at everything from how often the student hit the snooze button in the morning, to how often they checked their phone in a day, or how, how many clothes they wore out of their closet. So it, they needed to create a plan to collect their data. They needed to start collecting the data, revise that plan when they went through it a little bit more, collect it, and then visualize how to share that, and then reflect at the end about what it told them about themselves, their experiences, as well as the mathematics. So here you can see a student had to come up with all different ways to represent the, the variety of data they collected, whether it be the day of the week, how often they snoozed, how, how many times they snoozed, how long they snoozed for. And on the next slide, you'll just see their key. And so there was again, no guidance on, well, there was some guidance. There was learning on how to display data, but students were really able to to approach this in whatever format they wanted. You'll see here she chose circles for each snooze. You'll see in a moment, Friday was a pretty rough day. Some days she didn't have to set an alarm, and on the next, you'll see her display for the first week of her data. So students again are getting to be creative. Our student who was, was taking stock of what they wore from their, their closet, theirs was more around, the display was far more around clothing, but we got to see our students just, it's, it's like nothing they've done in math before, right? So they're really getting to flex those creative skills and to see how they can use that to convey a message. So now that we have all these math classes, I wanted to share a little bit with you of our current senior class, just as a sample, so you can see a little bit of context as to what students are graduating with. I will say that in using this data, because it is from this year's class, they have not graduated yet, but I did give them the benefit of the doubt, and anyone who's passing their class right now is going to pass their class for the year, based on this, for this data display here. But also a little reminder that our senior class this year has lived through, you know, tumultuous four years. So their freshman year, they only had the opportunity to take seven classes. That was the schedule we had that year. Their sophomore year was our hybrid COVID year, where students really, as sophomores, they were encouraged to take six courses, as we were trying to minimize students in the building and transfer all of that, that fun. And then their junior and their senior year, they did live through a full eight-period schedule. So here you'll see we have twenty of our students this year will graduate with three credits. Three is the minimum. It's the high, it's our high school, as well as the state minimum. Those twenty students, some of them will have, may have failed a course, and then recovered that credit either through modules, or through summer school, or by retaking the course. We also, we have one student in there that transferred to us as a sophomore without having a math credit, so it wasn't from here that it was missing. We also have students in there who are earning their fourth math, fourth-year math experience through a science course, whether that be through a physics course or engineering. And we have a handful of students in there who are earning their fourth-year experience through their CTE program, so it's embedded in their culinary program, or through an automotive program, so they won't see a fourth credit on their transcript reflected, but they are still getting that high-school-level curriculum embedded through their program. The five students we have at three point five is a really interesting number to graduate with, and that is a direct result of students who may have not passed a course, and then recovered that competency in modules. So our math modules program is a course, it's a competency recovery course, where students just focus on the competencies they weren't able to master the prior year. That means students can move at a quicker pace, so it doesn't necessarily take them a full year to recover that. And that means they get to take another course second semester. We have designed the master schedule so that our math modules runs the same time as financial algebra. And that course is, we're lucky enough to be able to offer that both as a full-year course, as well as a semester course. So we have students who will earn back their credit in math modules, and then for second semester, go over to financial algebra and earn an additional half of credits. So that's been really helpful, and students aren't losing a whole year of eligible math. So they're recovering that credit and still being able to come out net positive there. Hundred and sixteen of our students will graduate with four years of math, so that means they're taking four classes, one every year and passing those. And you can see there's, there's a variety of ways they could do that, as we just went through those pathways. We do have twenty-six students who have chosen to either double up, whether that is double up on two math classes here, or participate in our acceleration program, where they earn two math credits over the course of one year and a bit of the summer. Or some of our students, or many of our students come into us earning a credit from taking compacted Core Eight. So compacted Core Eight in, at AMS is the equivalent of our Core One. So students do earn a high-school graduation credit for taking that class. And you'll see we have ten students this year who will graduate with more than six, six or more credits. We have two who will earn seven math credits from us this, in graduating this year. So and again, a lot of that is from either doubling up, or doubling up and some acceleration and coming to us. So we're really trying to, to give students as many opportunities as possible. On our next slide, you're going to actually see some pretty interesting stats as to where our students are starting to fall out in terms of which pathways they're taking. We'll have sixty-eight seniors this year who will have taken at least one stats class with us over the course of their time, not all this year. In those classes, so four in our prior statistics course. So they would have taken that as a junior. We didn't offer it this year. We have forty-five seniors enrolled in our data science class this year, and nineteen seniors who will have taken AP stats. A few took it as juniors, and some are, the majority are taking it as seniors this year. None of those students are overlapped, because you couldn't take those classes at the time together. We have fifty-one seniors who will graduate with at least one class in calculus. Twenty-seven having taken intro to calc as their terminal classes, their class during their senior year. Eighteen will have completed two calculus classes, and six will have completed three calculus classes with us by the time they graduate. That gives us forty-eight seniors who will have taken an AP-level math class by the end of their graduation, or by the end of their senior year. So we're really, and you know, the remaining seniors who haven't taken an AP level, we're really making sure that the level to which they're ending their career here is at a really challenging and high level, while they feel supported in order to be successful. I did put financial, well, the graphic is financial literacy, but our financial algebra, although it is not technically a college-level course, it is a course that's for all students, whether they're college-bound or not, and it's the one I was talking a little bit about, that kind of flips flips math on its head. That class has, oh, I have listed the topics. It's not a personal finance course, so it's not necessarily about their own budgeting, but it's about the mathematics that supports the stock market, modeling a business, banking, consumer credit, automobile ownership, taxation, and taxes. So it's again, another class that's just super valuable, and is a nice pairing to personal finance if students do take that earlier, although that's not a math course, per se. It's another avenue for our students to really dig in. That's a whole lot about our math pathways, and now I just wanted to share excuse me, a little bit about the work I've been working with teachers on, and what we've been focusing on as a department within our own instructional practices. So with my work last year with a lot of teachers through observations and conversations, it was really evident, and I'm sure it's of no surprise, because I think everyone's heard it, we wanted to get back to talking about instruction. We've had a lot of focus on assessment and really wanting to dig into instructional practices, and specifically within the math department, it was about helping our students to move away from mimicking what they see in the class, and move towards thinking deeper and developing a more transferable set of skills. We know that this will help them both in the classroom, but also on standardized tests and in in the future when they go and they're using their mathematical skills. We know, again, we don't come across very many problems in our math situations in our real-world life that are, are truly exactly what we just saw modeled on the board. So we're really trying to help kids move to a deeper level of problem-solving, not just the rote application of an algorithm on a kind of quasi-real-world problem, but that idea of how do I, what do I do when I don't know what to do? How do I approach a problem, and how do I dig into the tools I have? It sounds great, but how do we help teach, students to foster that and understand how to, how to think deeply? One of the resources I found after this conversation with one of my teacher, one of the teachers in the department was based on the work of Peter Lydell and this idea of building a thinking classroom. I mentioned this book to the teacher at the end of last year, and no sooner had I done that, that it was in the Amazon cart, and she had it in the next day. It was through her absolute passion for and excitement for this, that actually snowballed and led to the formation of one of our communities of practice this year. And I'm sure as you're aware, our communities of practice are self-selected topics and groups, which are focused on improving student learning by evolving our teaching practices as educators. The work of the COP has grown to involve thirteen teachers, teachers and learning specialists, paraprofessionals, from math and science and special ed, all working together each month, and kind of doing a deep dive on this, the, the book, as well as the philosophies and the practices. It involves eight of our ten math teachers, again, all self-selected, and the work has been phenomenal. The remaining two teachers are in different COPs, but because of the collaborative nature of the department, they're already implementing some of these practices within their own classrooms, just through the conversations with their teaching partners and the evolution of lesson plans and such. The overall work of this COP and all of this is really to strengthen the toolbox that teachers have. It is not a lockstep program. It's nothing where we're asking every teacher to have their classroom look exactly the same. We want teachers to respond to the students in front of them, and then we want them to have the tools for that. And that's what a lot of this work has been about. It's been about a lot of finding the balance between direct instruction and cooperative learning. CPM is very based in cooperative learning, but we want to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students, those who are needing a little bit more guidance, and when is that appropriate? And so it's really that balance, all with a focus on encouraging students to think deeply and to transfer their learning. Many of the strategies that are in building a thinking classroom or involved in thinking classrooms, they really transfer that cognitive load to the students, while providing them a scaffolded situation and an environment in which they can take academic risks and see connections and really dig deeply trying to problem solve. These get added again to the repertoire our teachers have, in order to meet the needs in front of them, meet, meet the needs of the students in front of them. They don't eliminate the need for direct instruction. What they do is they evolve, and they, they may tweak what that looks like. Sometimes in a classroom, given a particular lesson, may have direct instruction, and that comes before some guided practice, or a curricular task where students are up at a board trying to to apply what they've just seen, not just mimic what they've seen. And in other times, direct instruction comes after students have made some really deep connections with some boardwork, with some thinking tasks, or maybe some, a thin sliced set of activities, where students have made these connections together, and the direct instruction comes in the form of clarification, talking about kind of those special cases, or maybe clearing up some notation in order for students to communicate their thinking. But seeing where students get to, getting to in their own work allows the teacher to really tailor that instruction to what students need. We're not going to go through and teach them to do what they already know. We're not going to go through and teach them to do what they already know to do. It allows us to, to go deeper with them um, by seeing where they're already at. Not all topics lend themselves to boardwork and collaborative uh learning, and not all lessons require direct instruction. So it's really that balance between the two that we've been digging into as a department um, and trying to help support each other on as we meet the needs of each of our, our students in front of us. Uh, some of the ongoing work, um, we are really looking at um our pre-core course. So this is a course that uh students who might need a little bit more uh time to solidify their skills and their ability to abstract before embarking on uh core one, the algebra skills in core one mainly. Um, so it's both filling in gaps as well as previewing some of the conceptual content from core one so that they're ready to dig in. Uh, this year we've tried for the first time and we are te- having this course be team taught um, with a learning specialist and a math teacher. Um, we're also continuing conversations that it started um with, I started them last year with Bethany in trying to look at what the pre-course seven and pre-core eight courses look like in, at AMS and how we can really connect those two courses with our pre-course, pre-core course uh to create a smooth transition for these students. Um, we know that the basic algebra skills are some of the most fundamental skills we can help our students to have a solid foundation in. We want to make sure these students, as well as those who are in core one, are really ready and set up to be successful for that. Um, so I'm excited to continue that work um as we look to make sure that that's a really seamless transition for them. Uh, another area of focus is our core two course. Um, so as we look at student achievement uh in this course, we're seeing that uh core two is one of our more challenging courses for students, and by that, it might be where they're struggling the most. Um, it's the first in our core, in our sequence of courses that's truly heterogeneous because it's the first time it's off-team. Uh, so in ninth grade, students are with their ninth grade peers in core one. Um, and so by the time we get to core two, uh, we have tenth graders, eleventh graders, and the occasional twelfth grader who might have come to us um, a bit behind or just needing some extra time. Um, so we're really digging into, um, there's a wide variety of learners, a wide variety of levels of achievement, and so we're trying to dig into what structures do we have in place for students to all find um, to find success there. Uh, it's not a new phenomenon, so it's not just this group of students or this group of teachers, but it's something that has been ongoing. We started the work last year. Um, trying to dig in and isolate what the actual uh contributing factors are. So it started with some work Dana and myself and Jen Heward all got into different core two classrooms, just trying to gather a lot of data um and observations. Um, and we've also done some, some department-wide discussions, kind of peeling the onion, digging in and just determining what those contributing factors are before we can try and find those solutions for supporting those students. Uh, but that is continued ongoing work. Um, and as we um look forward towards uh a co-teaching institute this summer, I really am excited about the potential um, impact that could have on both our core two course, um, if need be, as well as our pre-core courses. Um, so that's an exciting opportunity for us. Um, the other thing we're looking at is our fourth year math experience. Um, we call it a fourth year math experience. What this really is, is it's a requirement from the state of New Hampshire uh that students engage in high school level math competencies every year they're in high school. So if a student takes five years to graduate, they would engage in math for five years. It's not just that they have to take a fourth year. Um, this is the result of the fact that statewide colleges were seeing that more and more students were needing to take a non-credit bearing math course in college before they could actually get to a credit bearing math course. Um, and looking back, some of that was coming from that kind of gap that students might have taken. They hit their third year of math. They got that graduation requirement met, and then they took their senior year off because maybe that wasn't their, their comfortable place. Um, so the state required that we require this of all students um every year they're here. And again, they can get it through a variety. We've identified a variety of courses, all of our math courses, a number of our science courses, and a number of our C T E programs. Uh, but what we really want to do is dig deeper and make sure that we're meeting the needs and the interests of our students through this fourth year experience, that it's not just a checking the box, it's not just um, something they're doing because they have to, but in a way that will truly prepare them. If the end goal is that they are ready for a college-level mathematics course, um, are our offerings meeting those needs? Um, so we're really excited to continue that as well. Um, as our continued work with using assessments um for, as various sources to guide in our continued uh improvement. So recently, we spent a couple uh department meetings, really mapping our current P S A T results to courses um, in which that content is covered to see if the types of questions we're asking are aligned um, as well as the depth to which we're asking our questions and the language we're using. We're really trying to use those results, um, not just as a stopgap of S A T prep or P S A T prep, but really to deepen the, the level to which we're asking students to transfer their knowledge, right? Because there's not an algebra section of the P S A T and then a geometry section. We're really asking students to try a variety of problems, and so it ties back to that, that deeper thinking that we're working with our students on. Um, our last is a little bit of celebration of our math team. Uh, last year we uh had a very strong second, uh, second place finish uh in our league. We were, uh, we lost by point five, so a half a point. Uh, it was really close. It was a nail biter. We got to host the final meet, which is always really fun uh, because then they got to hoist up their trophy on their home turf. Uh, and this is our team from last year. Uh, we do, we're hosting again our final uh meet of the season next Wednesday in the midst of Fang Fest, so all of the other math coaches were really excited. They told us to let them know our theme and maybe they would come and participate, so we'll see if they follow through on that. Um, we're not quite in the same running this year for second place that we were last year. Uh, we have a smaller team. Um, uh, we're seeing actually that across the state, a lot of the teams are down this year. There's just lots of competing interests. Um, but we're really excited for them. If anyone's around next Wednesday and wants to see a whole lot of fun, uh, we'll have hundreds of math students here uh running around and, and digging into some really fun math, so. Um, everyone's more than welcome. That's all I've got for you guys. Yeah.
Thank you so much. I mean, I think that it's exciting to see refresh, relook at
mhm.
en- engagement, I, all that is exciting to hear.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
So let me open up, uh, any board members, how many questions you wanna throw it in?
Go for it. That's okay. Sure, um, I would say, um, I mean, in terms of student success, it's, it's really at that, that kind of core two level. I feel like we are not meeting the needs right there of the huge variety of learners we have in that, that content area. Um, that is, you know, in all of those pathways, and I didn't mention it, but the, the yellow is the courses that we, all of our students take. Um, all of our students take core one, um, all of our students take core two, and that's where the choice, so after that level, there's um, just by, by the course, by the sheer nature of choice, those courses aren't as heterogeneous, and so I think that's where we're struggling is how to support such a varied group of learners. Um, when there's less variety, we are able to dig in a little deeper, and so it's really about differentiating there. So how do we help those students when we have such a wide variety? I would say that's our biggest challenge right now. Yeah, um, our standardized testing results are, if we look at student achievement and student scores on the standardized tests, they're, they're pretty, pretty indicative. Our students who are struggling um in core two and might be a bit behind uh, below grade level are our students that we're looking to try and help in terms of the standardized test. Some of that is a result of the fact that they have not gotten as far in the content and in the curriculum. Um, when we're, we're asking um juniors to take the S A Ts, um, which is a certain level, and they haven't gotten to core three, then for some of them, it's, it's, the content is missing. Um, for others, it is, uh, when we approach it, it might be in a little bit, um, maybe a, not as deep a level. Um, so students are getting the skill, but then the transfer is not quite there for them, and that we see on the standardized test as well. Yeah. No, that's great. It's a great question. Um, and that is exactly how and what our, our focus was on redesigning the financial algebra, offering them that choice a little earlier, as well as the ability to get to a data science cloud course um, earlier in their career. So it's not just that fourth year that they finally get that choice. Um, so that was a, a pretty deliberate piece of that rework um in terms of some of that, in terms of getting to that, that more fun math. Um, and in terms of getting into the classroom, um, through observations, it's been an awesome way. Uh, the department's really, really collaborative and uh enjoys working with each other, but is also really open. So through getting into classrooms through observations, it's really opened up um kind of brainstorming sessions. I had a, a meeting, uh, a uh, debrief with one of the intro to calc teachers and I, we were just talking about some new ideas, and that's led to additional meetings to kind of look at new ways to do things as, as straightforward as like, okay, there's a bunch of new vocabulary. How can we do that in a far more engaging way? Or, um, people have been really receptive to, um, meetings and pushing into each other's classrooms as well. So if someone is doing some really strong boardwork and looking at some thinking tasks and getting kids to increase their mathematical discourse, I'm seeing that through observations and getting into each other's classrooms because I have that time. But then I can connect teachers and I've been able to say to a teacher who's really struggling with getting, you know, maybe it's just a quiet class, or maybe it's something that they've self-identified as something they would like some help on. Um, and to be able to connect to them. Um, and because of the, the kind of collegiality and collaboration of the department, um, they're pretty open to um, to seeking help from each other and receptive to that help from each other. So I can connect them and they're, they're willing to, to talk that way too. Yeah. Anyone else?
Um, that's great. And my first question is kind of similarly related to Stephen O'Keefe's, which is, um, you know, you said, how far students get depends on what they come in with.
Mm-hmm.
And part of the ongoing work is the pre-core to get us through the transition from, to the high school from seventh, eighth grade in particular.
Mm-hmm.
You are starting to work with, uh, well, the previous principal. Does that work, that works continuing with the?
Yep. So Kristin and I actually were in a meeting the other day and restarting that conversation, yeah.
I mean, is that enough of a, I mean, when we heard our um social studies uh curriculum presentation, it was really about, um, maybe it was English, or no, sorry, it was science, talking about vertical integration
Yeah.
was the phrase. So is that enough? Um, to, because, or it sounds like, you know, there's a, not a small cohort of students that maybe isn't quite ready for the standardized test because they're struggling in the core two.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, how do we receive better prepared students that they're not in a, in a remedial situation, but they're on, but they're leaning forward into their math career? And so that they are ready to perform well um on standardized tests and just to be able to have the choice maybe a little bit earlier in their high school career.
Yeah, no, great question. Um, we did, so this past year, we didn't actually have a math uh day or summer day. Uh, the year before we did, and it was a direct result of trying to make sure we were really deliberate as we kind of came back from COVID from our hybrid year, uh, and looking at, um, the sixth, seventh, eighth, and then all of the high schools sat down together uh in a summer day to look at kind of that unfinished learning um from the prior year where our focus was really on supporting students and getting through as much as we could, but acknowledging that this hybrid world was not going to be a full year game. Um, and being really deliberate about where we inserted kind of that missing content and not just saying, okay, it's ninth grade, you're gonna do half of eighth grade and the rest of ninth grade. Um, I would love to continue those conversations with the eighth grade. Um, each year around course selection time, I go down and I meet with the eighth grade teachers to kind of talk about where they've gotten to, what decision, what recommendations they're making for our students. Would love to be able to start that conversation earlier um, and to really focus on, um, we have been doing a lot of work. I know there's a lot of work going on um, K through six, and now we'll be looking at the middle school curriculum as well and making sure it's a, it's a priority for us that it all flows together so that although we have three different schools um, or four different schools, but uh three different districts, we want it to really be one cohesive. Um, so continuing that conversation to make sure that we can, we can fill in any gaps that we have as early as possible. As soon as they're identified, um, we want to help students to, to kind of close that gap, so definitely a work in progress. Um, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, uh, what is C P M that was on one of your slides?
College Preparatory Math. It's our, our uh text resource, it's our curriculum, um, the guide.
And then just some observations, maybe questions about the data sciences, really kind of cool. Um, I know some of the science classes count as, as a math.
Yep.
Count as math. Well, does that class count as a science?
Uh, it doesn't. And actually, in our program of studies, we um call it data science and statistics so that we were super clear with colleges that this is a statistics and a math course.
Okay.
Uh, because one, that was one of the pieces of feedback that students were really nervous about when we were proposing this course for the first time. Um, was that, that might potentially be confused.
Okay, yeah, well, it kind of confused me too.
Totally reasonable.
And are, because of that, um, are you, or maybe it's too new, but are you seeing um more students doubling up? Like taking that in addition to maybe a, a core level at the same, the same year?
Um, so we didn't, we've, we definitely have students who are doubled up in there. We have students who doubled up in AP calc, not those two, but, I mean, AP stats. Um, we haven't, I haven't done that analysis in terms of like compared to past years yet. Um, but there's definitely an increase in students taking statistics and our bottom number, I, you know, bottom line of number of students hasn't uh, deep, increased either, so um, I would suspect they are.
Okay, and then does the curriculum um incorporate any game theory principles?
We don't.
No.
Haven't done that yet.
Um, it, does it incorporate the core one and two principles? Um, what I mean is, are they using the, the skills that they've learned in their previous math classes to apply um to their data and analytics?
Oh, yes, yep, yep. So they're doing linear regressions, they're doing all sorts of stuff that's connecting back to their core one and two, yeah.
Okay, and then the final question for me is, um, any thinking, and maybe there's no answer for this right now, but um, about how A I and like the chat G P T things that are emerging.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it could be a threat to data scientists in the world. Um, I mean, or how you, how you put the human experience to, to add the value that is a job in the future.
Mm-hmm. That is a great question. If I had an answer, I would be all sad.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna wrap this up.
No problem.
This is a lie. And I know we have the math curriculum in our consent agenda.
Yep.
For approval, so thank you so much. Really appreciate.
Thank you.
Um, you know, excited to see the, the col- the collaboration with our teachers and the involvement. It's
It's exciting work.
It is.
Thank you.
How to make math exciting, right? Awesome. Um, we're going to move up the discussion with our athletic director so we can send everybody home since they've been here all day or at events all day. Yes, Kelly, wish you might come up. Um, so I asked uh Steve to invite Kelly tonight because with the discussion of start times coming up at the S A U, I thought it'd be good for us to hear directly from our athletic director what conversations she's had, what she's hearing about schools changing times, working with us, any information you can give us.
Sure, so, um, I've been continuing to
I've been continuing to compile our early dismissal times.
I've got that data and that will, that data will be included in the report for late start next week.
And it's in our, it's in the principal's reports.
One thing I would like to know, if you would also like to add in that is I did poll all of our D two opponents. Cause we are majority D two school, um, and then also put in their schools. We are either co-op with, or we play pretty regularly in other sports. Um, and listed all of their start and end times. Which I don't know if that's useful for you, but if you'd like it, I'm happy to send it along.
I think any of this data is going to help us.
Great. Um, so I'm adding some other things there. I'm starting to look at middle school started in times as well. Just, you know, for fun. So right now there are four, uh, sorry, five, um, other schools in our, either in our division or that we play regularly that have, um, a similar end time to us being three o'clock or after Portsmouth is the latest with three fifteen. And of those, the latest fall seems to be the biggest issue, fall and, and sometimes spring a little bit, um, with uh, start times for games, early spring and late fall being the biggest. The biggest adjustment we made was, uh, requesting that all of our start times at away events be pushed back to four thirty. Thus allowing us some extra time to get there and, and, you know, hopefully cutting down on travel time. The comparison between last year, um, and this year is an interesting one, um, because of I, just the flop in schedules and the fact that this, you know, this year started a new cycle. Um, so it's not a fair, direct comparison because we don't have the same opponents necessarily home or away. So, you know, for example, boys soccer had to go to Kennet this fall. Doesn't matter if we have a three o'clock or a two thirty dismissal, you're missing a significant amount of class time there. So, so I think it might, it might behoove us to continue to, to track this data for a wide variety of reasons, but also since it is a two-year cycle and we do know that the home and away flip every year, um, we might have a better idea about, uh, what that looks like. The 2020, 2021 data, um, isn't comparable because we played half seasons regionally, um, because of transportation and the, and the response, um, to COVID. So, um, across the board, um, I think the biggest impact on our time uh, reduction out of class, um, is the vans. Um, it's been really nice to be able to either split teams up and just send JV ahead and varsity later or vice versa, depending on what the playtimes were. Or, you know, just to be able to have smaller teams traveling kind of at their own pace. Um, and you know, that, that kind of alleviates a little bit of, of that time constraint. And availability for, for drivers, you know, is still, still continues to be an issue. So the vans helped tremendously with that.
Every school that you requested did a four thirty start. Away.
For the most part, I think there might've been a couple instances where they had another game coming on after. But yeah, for the most part, nobody had any issues. People are usually willing to do what we need to do. The implication in pushing back to four thirty though, um, was pretty big on some of our JV programs. Because the varsity games have to get in, and I know we had talked last year, um, about the light issue and, and kind of being victim to the sun. For the schools that don't have lights. Um, I did reach out to some of them about, you know, like what would it take to get some lights there? And, you know, not everybody has the resources to be able to make that happen. So in those instances, we either cut the JV game short. Didn't play it. Or, you know, try to come up with some other way to play it on a different day, reschedule it here, send varsity there, JV here. Because we are very fortunate to have a, a large number of fields to be able to use. You know, we can, we can play JV field hockey out front while JV soccer's playing out while varsity soccer's playing on the turf and then flop them so that, you know, the varsity teams get their games in and we can utilize the lights where we have them. Um, I have talked with facilities about also seeing what possibilities lie on Simeon. Because there are lights there. Um, so for soccer, for example, that was the biggest conversation or the biggest sport that I had that conversation about. It's not a, it's not a great space for a JV soccer game and it would be tough to have parents get in there with the way that that space is now. But, you know, going, looking at possibilities, there are, you know, always possibilities for how we could expand that space or, or make it a little bit more friendly. But since that is the only other field we have lights on, I want to, I want to try to maximize that, um, as much as we can. We would then also have to find another location for the Amherst Patriots and youth lacrosse who uses that field all fall, um, for practices in the evening. But again, we're fortunate to have the facilities that we have. So I'm sure that we could figure something out if, if that became, um, a possibility.
One of the, um, and Kelly and I met to talk about this anticipation for the report. You know, I'm a, a, a couple of generations ago coach, right? I did this a long time ago. And one of the things that the culture has changed since my time being a varsity soccer coach, in which it was very common to have games on Saturday. So the Kennet game would have been on Saturday in my past. And but what happens now is kids are so involved in multiple programs that if you have a game on Saturday, there's no guarantee you're going to get the kids. And coaches are more apt to now and balancing their life and families as the weekend's off. But cause in the old days, the long trips were Saturdays. And could just save instructional time, but that culture especially, don't you think the club commitment?
Yeah. Yeah.
My son, when he played, he had a lacrosse club equipment on the weekends. And he was very grateful that they didn't have soccer. He also played high school soccer. He was able to balance both and that's what a lot do. Obviously you have to choose NHIA first.
Right.
But the more you make those difficult decisions, it really does. Then kids sometimes don't play soccer.
Right.
Um, and that was, I just appreciated that where we are today. Because a Kennet, as you said, isn't a great solution. But someone's got to go to Kennet. Cause otherwise Kennet doesn't have a team.
Right.
And everyone who goes to Kennet has a long ride. There's not that many division two. You know, BOGO, right? I have to go to Kennet. So, I mean, well, let's just do that. I said, Kelly, let's just do that on Saturdays. It's just not reality.
Yeah.
We're squeezing it in and we lose some instructional time on that, but everybody does, but that's kind of, but next year they'll be coming here.
Right.
Um, and we won't lose instructional time.
Right. It'll just be girls soccer the next year instead of the boys. So they flop, but.
Is it, do you think when you look at it and then we'll have this, that we have clawed back some instructional time, second year of doing this?
Yes. Yeah. I definitely think we have. I, I don't think, I don't think the, it's as much as we wanted. And then in others, you know, it, it changed golf, for example. Um, the increase was, was pretty large between last year and this year. The change in divisions, changed locations, um, a little bit further away. And, um, you know, we're still working on kind of solidifying our partnership with ACC and Panima a little bit more to possibly be able to host some more home matches. You know, we, we had a couple that were at Panima, which, uh, is okay. Um, and we're, we're grateful for it, but varsity, we, we should be at ACC. Um, that's our goal. So, our coaches and I were talking last night about how we can, you know, partner with them a little bit better and, and get back there so that we can host some more matches and some bigger matches so that it eliminates travel for us and, and some surrounding towns as well.
The other piece that was part of our conversation during the fall, when we chatted, I remember you and I were pretty excited about the impact of the vans. So let's keep going. Let's, I actually looked into purchasing more vans. The price went up like a third. And as we had bought 10 vans, we could have sold them and made profit.
I just had Tony put numbers today. I was like, what are we going to have left in transportation? I want more vans, but.
I know, I know we're not allowed to do that. But so, but remember you were, you were do it. See, we could save some money and do it again. I went brought, so the price has gone astronomical. And it has helped. But you also, and I think I appreciated your care because I was a varsity basketball coach.
Yeah.
And I'll be honest with you. Back then though, the game started at seven, like I'd go to Thayer High School. Anybody ever heard of Thayer High School? Thayer High School is outside of Key.
My husband went there. Fun fact. Doesn't exist anymore.
Actually it was, it was Dennis Littkey's high school. We connected to.
Vince Tom taught there.
Yes. A whole bunch of people. But, you know, and I was, you know, I was, I went after it pretty good on those long rides. I would not have wanted to drive home. You know, at 10:30 from there after coaching varsity basketball.
Yeah.
Now I was also a golf coach. I would have driven home, back. I didn't back. I was pretty relaxed on the golf course. So, I mean, and that's why it's one of that yours is to apply the van appropriately. Based on the instance, because it doesn't work for every single contest. Because sometimes we don't want to put a coach in that position at 11 o'clock at night driving after coaching.
Yeah.
Two games. But I think the future is, if we can, is more van type. It's, it's, we can split the teams, which I love what you're doing. You know, we, why send both if only one of them has to go? Does save money. And it creates so much more independence and we're not relying on others. So I appreciate that work, but it doesn't work for every sport, every.
Yeah. As much as we can, we do, but yeah, I had to drive to Hanover for a field hockey game this fall and coming back, I hit exit, exit 12 and was like, oh, play the music, girls. Let's go. Um, so yeah, but I think, I think overall, um, we've made, we've made progress. I think there's more work to be done. And I also think that this is not a conversation that's just limited to South Heagan or our district. You know, I've had many conversations with ADs at, you know, our meetings and conferences about, you know, looking at the transportation issue and school time issues, because we all face them at some point, just the, the level to which you do. And looking at, you know, is there a way that we could regionalize schedules a little bit more across the state for the benefit of everyone, um, in a lot of areas. So, um, those talks are, are definitely being had and are on people's radar. But I mean, that's changing, uh, an institution that's been around for many, many decades. Um, and I think that that will take some real kind of creative out of the box thinking, but.
And it's tough on a team like Kennet.
Yeah.
You go regional, then you're boxing out certain areas of the state.
Right.
Uh, cause COVID was great, right? We weren't, we, we, you know, my little school district played Concord. Row, but it's hard.
Yeah.
Here we're, we're blasted. We've got some division two pretty close.
Right. Yeah. No perfect solution for everybody, but.
And we can box out other kids who, they have, they, they want a good experience too.
Right.
Well, um, let's take one or two questions and keep it short. Dan, if you want to know.
Everybody knows I'm sensitive to hockey. Sure. You know, the hockey schedule up here has been terrible for kids because almost all of our home games have started at four twenty or earlier. In hockey, a home game for us is an away game because it's 30 minutes to Conway Arena. It takes 30 minutes for most kids to get their equipment on. They have to get there an hour before the game in order to warm, get it, their equipment on, get warmed up. You know, are we sensitive? Are we making the, the point with Nashua that we have, we have this problem? Most of our AP classes are last period of the game, last period of the day. So to pull kids out is, is very costly on an academic, from an academic standpoint. Pull them out multiple times per week. You know, I've had at least two weeks where Zach missed two AP classes in the same week.
Yep.
As a result of this, he might as well just stay at home that day. So are we making it clear to Nashua that, you know, if, if they're going to work with us, they have to be sensitive to this because, you know, to, to have, you know, all of our away games are, are five o'clock at night or later, except for one or two games against Manchester. So they're doing a good job of, of scheduling them there. Even when some of the games that we played, there were away games at our home arena, we're still after five o'clock, but our home games are scheduled after four, I mean, before four or, you know, round four. So
Yeah.
Are we making that clear to?
Yes. To Nashua, we're making it very clear and, and Conway as well. Um, but I mean, as I'm sure you know, with how much time you, you spend at Conway, the addition of Riviere having their teams using that as the rink now has significantly cut down, um, ice time. And NCAA rules dictate, you know, large windows pre and post game, um, taking away. I mean, luckily right now they're just their, their club, but once they move up, we're going to see even more presses on that ice time. And, you know, it, it would seem that rinks are giving that, that prime time to their varsity teams. The girls teams having the same issue at St. A's. You know, rental times are being taken. So we've got practice tonight at eight o'clock, uh, or eight fifteen. So it's, you know, it's, it's a a double edged sword because in the winter and it's a lot of programs, it's not just hockey. We're at the mercy of the facilities from which we rent. And, you know, we can, we can push back and say, hey, we can't take that ice time. And their answer is, okay, I'll sell it to someone else. Because there's a, a wild shortage of it as well. So, um, looking at other rinks is certainly a possibility. Um, doing so though increases travel time. They're really.
Although, all the arenas in the area are almost equidistant from, from us. I mean, there's two in Hooksett that are about 30 minutes. There's, there's St. A's, which is 30 minutes. There's, Cyclones Arena, which is about 30 minutes. So for us, I mean, Nashville might be a little longer because they don't have the five minute drive.
But yeah, and I'm, it's, it's tough on the Mount Vernon. It's tough on the Mount Vernon kids too. There's really no easy way to get to any of those rinks from here, but I totally hear what you're saying.
They're going from here and not Mount Vernon.
True, but.
The same, it's the same commute for them as it is for our.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, I think the solution's looking into other rinks and seeing if they can offer us better ice time. Nashville was fully aware of our desire to not be dismissing kids from school early, which is why we moved, we flopped our practice lot with Pelham when it happened. Cause we had no choice that that practice lot used to be at 3:00 PM. So we had to switch that practice lot. So I'll continue to inquire with other rinks in the area about what they can give us and, and, you know, cross our fingers that we can make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you. John?
I got a couple. Yeah. The, the bit about, and maybe these are more to you, I don't know, whoever, but the, the bit about not playing on Saturdays, the basketball's playing on Saturdays. Yeah.
Basketball played on Saturdays last year. They don't, no Saturday games this year.
I thought there was one this Saturday.
We had a reschedule against John Stark on January 28th.
Okay.
This Saturday, we don't. We're going to Kennet. We go this week, we're at Merrimack Valley on Friday. Next week is senior night for the boys on Tuesday. The girls are home this Friday for their senior night. And then next Thursday is the reschedule against Kennet.
Okay. Uh, maybe I looked at my schedule wrong then. Um, but I don't know if that, if your assumption is correct, that we couldn't look at that as a solution for at least some of the teams, maybe hockey's a good example. And, and somebody's got to make, at some point he's got to make a choice. Are you going to participate in this or you're not going to participate in this?
I get it.
It's, it's just a question to really think about, like, maybe we should push that a little harder and not assume that it's impossible just because.
And I didn't mean to say it never happens, but it used to be much more regular.
Right.
That you would schedule advance the long trips. Now it's saved for the makeups. It's saved for the rare occasion. And I think, I think schools have tried and I think it, it, one thing I know that when you require parents to make a choice, it's not a great thing. Especially the difference between heading to a all-star, you know, missing it for a, a showcase versus a game. It is a nightmare.
Okay. Right. And we can't just do it unilaterally either. We have to work with everybody.
John, can I, can I, there's something I want to feed off of what you just.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead.
So Kelly, can you take like just two minutes to describe, because the one thing we hear with start time change, well, the kids just need to take academics first. The importance of sports, the importance of kids being involved.
Yes.
Can you take two minutes and describe what the benefits are of our kids participating and out? Because that's, I think a very big part of this.
Yes, absolutely. Um, and I think, I, I'm proud to think that we do it better than a lot where our athletic program is, is a true extension of the classroom. Where we can take the same skills and, uh, concepts, maybe not subject wise, but the same, um, methods of time balance. Learning how to be great, um, honing your skills, finding something you love, chasing passion, um, and, and helping kids apply that there. And then also working with them to show how they can do it in the classroom. I think a prime example is at mid semester time, we pulled, um, grade reports, um, and had five students, uh, athletes that were looking to go into the winter that I had to have a conversation with about academic eligibility, um, and sat down with them and we made a plan. Met with counselors, met with advisors on how this plan was going to go. And every single one of them showed significant improvement come the end of semester too. Nobody was academically ineligible. And I think all but two had pulled all of their N season to the passing range and the other two had shown tremendous growth. Um, and had significantly reduced their NC. So being able to leverage the relationships that our coaches are able to have. The work that Tony and I do during the day, um, to talk to kids as well and, and help develop those relationships too, is, it, it's just invaluable. And it reaches kids on a completely different level as well. Um, and I think it, I'd like to think that it helps them connect those critical, critical thinking skills on, hey, this isn't math class, but how can I apply the same, the same work ethic and, and perseverance and concepts that I'm, I'm learning, you know, on the court or the field or the ice or the track, um, to, to class as well. And, you know, life is a, is a, is a balancing act. So teaching kids to prioritize and, and figure out how to be able to fit all of the things that they love to do with all of the things that they need to do in a day. Love to do with all of the things that they need to do in a day is an unbelievably valuable skill that I think athletics. Um, and co curriculars, you know, are, are tremendous value for.
Thank you. Sorry, John.
Oh, no problem. Perfect. I mean, I just add, I mean, confidence building and a lot of positives there. Um, on the vans, okay, the cost has gone up a third, but even, I mean, that, the van paid for itself in less than a year. So. You add a third onto that and, and it's still a good value, it seems to me. So is, is your thinking that it's too expensive to pursue or that we should pursue? Continue to pursue.
Budget process, we'll look at again, the delivery time is crazy long, so.
Yeah.
Really a budget process, but I know Kelly was trying to reduce some costs in her transportation budget. No, I think it absolutely just has to be explored.
Well, I mean, would we have, okay, here's a, could, could it be explored sooner? Um. With the idea that. It pays for itself in the existing budget because every van that you have reduces your need for busing by X. So therefore, um, your budget neutral.
So that's what I'm working towards. So for example, winter twenty twenty one, we spent. Approximately, uh, thirty thousand five hundred dollars on transportation. Winter this year, which we have about two weeks left in the regular season for most sports, we've spent fourteen thousand dollars. So we're going to have significant savings just this season. Um, fall to, fall last year to fall this year, we saw seven thou, about roughly seven thousand dollars in savings. Um, and I expect probably about the same for spring as well. So I'm trying to. Make, make.
We'll look at the ballot.
Enough to.
Exactly. We help.
Right.
And I have eyes on other areas of the S A U, uh, like, you know, we'll talk about Amherst doing the same type of thing.
Yeah.
Uh, but no, it absolutely has to be one that was a wonderful thing, flexibility, increasing structure and time on tape money. I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. So, okay. I, I sooner rather than later.
I did have a little sicker shot.
Well, that's good, but, um, it seems like the ROI would still be completely legitimate. And then finally, um, from me. Uh, just to reducing impacts on, on instructional time and Dan, one of the things Dan said ties into this. I mean, why are AP classes at the end of the day? Why can't your core hardcore academic classes be your, your periods one through six, I guess, or five? And focus the end of the day on maybe more exploratory classes or more elective classes. So when the athletes do have to miss to go to Kennet or whatever it happened, ice time. That it's less of an impact on their academic, um, achievement.
So, uh, and. When you make a master's schedule in a school, um, you want, um, the match rate, you want to get to match as many first requests as you can. And the more restrictions you place on a schedule, it reduces your match rate. So if you block out that AP classes can only be in these three blocks, you could get an eighty percent match rate as opposed to ninety four percent. And what Dana wants to work on with Karen and Mike is ninety eight, you want ninety something percent of the kids get their first choice. And the more you block, and, and Dana and I talked about this, one of the things that impacts match rate, but it's juice is worth the squeeze is team. Right? I mean, we're, we're team, uh, not, no judgment here, but the more restrictions you put on the schedule, the impact is on the match rate. How, how many number of students get their first choice? And in my world, the most important thing is kids get their first choice classes. Then you got to go to second, you got to go to third. But the match rate we want, and I don't know what the match rate was last year when he did it. See that's, but, and if, if you block out there, you're going to learn ninety six percent is excellent. That's great work. But the more restrictions, right? The more restrictions, you reduce that number.
Yeah. And we have a lot of, do a lot of really things, even one, but it's, 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 it's another one. So we have to support them to be able to, to, to keep going, you know. Um, it's about. Five of the fourteen sections of A D happen to fall during our last couple of series, those not top none. But, you know, they're also doing the same to Andy and the buyer, which are also because of, because of that period of because of others. Um, so for that, and we have some, yeah, these are not, that are also very valid. Nobody wants to do that.
And why that match rate is so high is really because room availability. Once, it, once you, you know, restrict room availability. That, that really impacts your match rate as well. So. To be honest with you, I'm incredibly impressed you did it based on the restrictions that I'm just aware of, and I'm not aware of everyone because I've only been, you know, a little bystander. Here for the last eighteen months. I'm very impressed with the ninety six percent match rate based on what I know of the restrictions. So they're doing a heck of a job running. Galen and, and Karen and you and running and running and running different scenarios. But it's hard. It is hard.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it. The balancing that match rate sounds important. I guess to that extent. If you can. You should place hard, place those core classes earlier in the schedule. And if you have to make an exception here or there to. Preserve the mat rate, maybe that's just balancing, um, choice that you're making, but. It is true that a lot of these athletes are missing important instructional time. This is a fact, yes?
Yes, and anybody, right, that, that is correct.
And, and at the fun, uh, as a function of what we're talking about here is the start time, is the later end date pushes all that forward and, and we have darkness issues. We have places with no light. We have travel, all this stuff we've just been talking about. So these are. It's a real challenge. Yeah.
Hundred percent. And because of the, my understanding is I get to dig in a little bit more before next week. Is the change in schedule reduced? Instructional time for every single student here by twenty minutes.
Per day.
Okay. Because unlike Amherst Middle School, which goes to three twenty four, the last academic class ends here approximately three. And so those twenty four minutes we took off the top. For all six hundred, not just athletes, not every single student, we decrease twenty minutes a day. Twenty minutes times a hundred and seventy something. And that's, and I'll write about this. Everybody's got, we get affairs of juice worth the squeeze. There is no question that there is solid research about, right, asleep start time. I get it. But we are in New Hampshire. We are in New Hampshire with a school that has two thirds of the, two thirds of kids playing where athlete, where a place where we said. No academic class ends after three o'clock. All those now, the research does is twenty minutes a day of lost instructional time. Equal to the change in sleep? Is, I mean, at the middle school, you're going to see this. I'm trying to count the number of orthodontic appointments in middle school. Because the number of orthodontic appointments that are reducing instruction time there, it's fascinating to me. Um, and but, so this is where, and I get it, and you have to weigh the balance of the research with, and, and Stephen and I right before this meeting. And we hit, we tried to do it on, on Friday, but it was on our list, but we got, I'm talking legislature. I'm not Mr., I'm local control guy and I love all that. But this life would be a lot better from statewide. Every single, like California did, I'm not, you know, but California said you cannot start secondary before eight o'clock. Anywhere in public high school in, in, uh, California, that would change our life if everybody did this. It would change everything. I'm not saying, so, but this is local control and I'm in. And, and I've read, you know, some of the data I'm into this. Actually, I could tell you, I probably wouldn't have taken this on because, but it is. But is the juice worth the squeeze? Because, I'm sorry.
And so, no, it's all right. Kelly, do you know off the top, you had approximately like percentage of students in ball sports, winter sports? Like how many of our student body is participating?
Roughly per season, on average, we're right about two sixty to two eighty.
To two hundred and eighty students. Okay.
Per season, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I did also include on the early dismissals, just like some anecdotal. Um. What the, if shift, shift, what shifting the end time would do to early dismissals. I did calculate that a little bit and put it in purple there just for comparison sake.
Two thirty, oh, okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Cause I think my, my, one of my biggest concerns is like, it's not just the one student missing Wednesday. The problem is like a teacher has kids missing Wednesday, some missing Tuesday, some missing Thursday, some missing. And now they got to remember what they taught those days and help that student get caught up on three different days and all over that. That's.
It's hard.
It's hard. And I, I feel for our teachers terribly on that.
I just want to make sure I thank you for what you've done.
Okay, my pleasure.
We've, we've thrown enough curveballs at the sports program.
It's all good.
The extra curriculars that this has, this, you know, the puzzles you have to put together must be pretty daunting. Sometimes to make end times match up with game times and practice times and make sure everybody's happy. I'm sure you deal with a lot of people like me who. Email you and.
I appreciate it though, because the, the, there aren't, there's no one else in the building other, well, I have Tony, but there's no one else in the building who like, you know. Gets it. So it's, it's nice to. It's nice to have the questions asked because sometimes it's stuff you don't think of when. You're just plugging away on your own. So I appreciate the conversation.
And just make one final comment. It won't take very long. Just on what you said, it would be helpful if it was statewide, but maybe we can affect that. Maybe Dan can help us figure out how to do that. Um. But we, we don't play statewide. We play, I mean, we play division two or some other people. What efforts, if any, have we been making or should we make to our competitor teams? To encourage them to change their start time so that in that universe, we're all upon the same field, no pun intended.
And Kelly has reached out and she has connected in.
I think that would take some time to implement, I suppose, but is anyone interested in that? But are you preliminary reads on any?
I have not had conversations with other schools about them changing their start times. I've only asked about our game times and everyone is. Wonderful.
And they understand why.
Oh yeah, hundred percent. Yeah, hundred percent.
Might be worth the question. They're like, so what?
A lot of districts don't want to take this on.
They don't want to.
Fifty one forty nine, you know, people get really frustrated. I admire this place for taking this on. I really do. You know, in, in the middle of all this one going on, I admire. Um, the effort of the committee and the S A U board for taking a look at this. Very much.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your time.
No problem. Thanks.
Okay, um, all right. So moving on, reports received. Uh, Mike is not able to be here this evening. So questions on principal report, I don't, if there's any, I'm not sure whether Dana's. Fully give it a chance. Yeah. Um, so let me just ask if there's any principal report questions out there. Okay. The one thing I just want to say is the number of evaluations and observations getting done is amazing. Um, you know, it's a lot of hard work. To accomplish all of that you've done, to see that you're actually on track is, I think this is the first year I've heard that. So.
It's the second year.
Second year.
Second, second.
Second year.
Second year. Yeah. It's exciting. So thank you for everyone pushing in and, and doing it work and, and watch it, looking at the, the coaching and supporting approach versus, you know. Negative, bring the hammer down approach. So I think that style works within our culture. So I want to say thank you to that. Um. Anything, anyone else want to bring out? No? Okay, um. Wanted to see if there was a couple of things you brought, like Granite State Challenge Team. You know? Good for them. They won.
Winner.
Winner, winner. They did awesome. Uh, robotics had a comedy night and they have their first competition coming up in March. Um. It's just a lot going on, hype, hype's coming up. March sixteenth, so.
Can I, can I plug two things?
Yes, please.
Um, so last night we had our eighth grade parent night, which I think is one of our favorite events. Um, we had a hundred and thirty two visitors. Um, and it was very, that positive energy, uh, here was really palpable. I think we've gotten a lot of feedback already. From folks who got to interact with staff and students for that night. So, um, that. Was executed with the help of many, many staff members who were here all night. So it went really, really great. Um, the other thing is there's a write up in the report about the work that our graduation requirements committee has been doing. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware it was in our South Higgin scoop. There'll be another, um, communication going out tomorrow, but. We're getting ready to have our parent feedback panels. So our student feedback panels actually came up with a whole process for, um. Uh, gathering, what are the targeted questions that we want to ask folks? And, uh, what information are we going to provide them based on the work that the committee has done? So that is happening over Zoom, um, next week on Tuesday at six thirty. So. The information will be out and about for tomorrow, for, uh, tomorrow, hopefully next one, but by the end of the week. So we hope that people will tune in.
Nice.
Yeah.
Nice. Um, is there anything else that you've highlighted in there? I mean, we, we're able to read it through, but I just want to see if there's anything that, yeah.
I think you hit on my, my personal favorite topics, the supervision evaluation and the, and the graduation committee work is, is the big work.
Right on. Great. Thank you. Awesome. Um. Niask, so he can progress report. Uh, could, do you want to just give a, or Dana, or see a brief description what this is? And we know what Niask is. I don't think we normally see a progress report. So, so can you just explain what it's for? Is it, do you provide it to somebody?
Sure. So, um, interestingly, uh, Niask since, uh, the visit in twenty eighteen was our last decennial visit. Since that visit, the whole process for Niask has really been completely. And so these types of reports, we, we won't be doing them any longer. So this was just to kind of finish out the process of the, finish out the old process. Um, so the old process, you'd, you know, you'd have your visit, you do a two year report, you do a five year follow up report, and then you'd get back into things. So. This was just closing the loop on that last final process, um, the last final step of that process. We are, um, looking to get started again with Niask. It's kind of. A little bit nutty to think that we're going to get started again, but we are, um, going to jump back in with Niask, um, starting in the spring of twenty twenty six. Um, is when we will have kind of an info session with the folks from Niask. Um, to learn about the new process, um. Uh, and what the expectations will be. And then we'll start our self study process in the fall of twenty twenty six. Um. Then, uh, we engage in some self study. Then we have a collaborative visit with the folks from the ask. Out of that comes a school growth report. And then, um, after that, we get our, another decennial visit and that will happen in twenty twenty nine. Um, then I, I've worked under both, both. Systems, the old and the new system, and the new system is really great because it really puts the focus on teaching and learning, which is where we wanted to be.
Okay. Um, I wanted to ask one question before, so it, it, the items in there that are listed, um. Like, are those required to be followed up on or, because I saw it's like you have responses because. Where it stands out to me. So one of them was about the science labs and the safety of the science labs. We put a warrant on the ballot last year. It did not pass. And it was not suggested to bring back this year, but when I see it on that knee ass, does that mean we need to address this before they show up again next time? And we need to start working on that now.
What I think is really interesting about the old process and Stephen Christine, who can tell, disagree with me, but I think the old process was really used as a way to get building projects passed. Um.
Major focus. It helped, it helped.
It really, it really does help. It helps because it's, yes, it's your accreditation. Um, I don't think there's an expectation that you're doing every single thing, right? There is an option to say that you're rejecting a recommendation. Usually if you're going to reject a recommendation, you want to have a pretty good reason why you're rejecting this recommendation because the process should be so collaborative. Um, so we marked it, we marked it as in progress. It's something that we still believe needs to happen.
And some of the safety stuff has been done.
Yeah.
Flash, remember they did the tour, they, they fixed all the gas stuff. So some of it has been done, but it's not required to do the massive million dollar.
Trying to.
Um, it would have been, you know, a nice checkbox if it passed and you did it. Um, but no, they don't require that, but they do require the safety stuff and to take a look, um. It really is, you have to justify.
Okay.
And you send it to them.
Okay. I was, my question was like, do we need to get started on this? Cause we're going to get dinged if it's not in place. Okay. Anyone else have questions about the ask? For. Thank you for this, because I don't know if it's ever been really shown in the past. We discussed, it's kind of nice to see, just informative for us. So I appreciate that. Um. Facilities report, anybody question?
Did you, did you catch what I wrote in board notes? So just to, in public, so the, um, skylights. In, um, Roger's in depth working, it turns out that the skylights are part of the fire mitigation system. That if we have a fire, they automatically open and allow ventilation in our schools. Which is an unusual little discovery. So it's not as simple as making a phone call to Cowall and say, replace the skylights. Because it has to be reconnected and rewired with the fire mitigation system. The fire margin, Roger did. Talked to the local fire chief and say, because where we're at, can we avoid that piece? Cause that was thirty year old technology or whatever. And, uh, they abstained courteously. We have to, um, continue the same fire mitigation strategies. So Roger is now. Um, looking for a vendor, which has the ability to create the skylight and connect it to the fire system. So the mitigation will continue. That, uh. Has, I'll just be completely honest, that has impacted my dream about watertight by September one. Um. It, it hasn't, we want to, I think we can order, but remember this is. A significant construction project with big giant cranes hang out over people. So it's not like we're going to do it with kids and walking around in school. So it was really a summer closed down for a week, you know, um, construction management, this little fun event. So Roger's on it. Um. You know, I don't know how many people, but it's at the plan level, like Roger dug out the plans and found it. And, um, I, I don't think. And um, I I don't think any of the other have ever seen it before. This was a new little endeavor in Little Sohegan Design. Um, years ago, so um, we are looking at bolstering our leak. You know, can we seal better? Can we do stuff? Because we want this place watertight. Um, so we may look at some, you know, some increased patching and things. Um, but the full skylight phase one of the skylight program has been delayed until we can order the right. At least we didn't put up the wrong cow wall.
Right.
And not have it and didn't order the wrong cow wall. So that's winner winner chicken dinner. Um, we'll keep you posted, but it didn't, didn't, and not, I'm sure you're not surprised. Very few things have gone exactly as we designed in our fun little world. But um, we're getting better and we're doing the right thing and we're doing it the right way. And we're catching it without any, you know, expense. We didn't order the stuff and have to pay any, you know, restocking fee on cow wall.
Yeah. So I just, two questions. One, cost-wise, it sounds more expensive, potentially.
Potentially.
We just don't know yet.
We don't know because we haven't found the vendor who's going to cost up.
Okay, the other part is just the current safety situation. If we've got.
They're glad we're working on it.
Okay, yep. So we're working.
Doing the best we can. We just. Yeah, and I was hoping to do it in the summer because this is big giant cranes. This isn't just, you know, this isn't little stuff.
We haven't given up on it.
Great. I love your hopefulness.
Or if not, we've got, we've got Columbus Day weekend. Okay.
I don't like to cancel school for what this.
No.
Well, it's Mike next year, Mike.
Okay, um, anyone else have questions about that piece? Because that is new. Okay. Um, well, Roger, thank you for digging in and figuring all this out and keeping us on the right path and everyone working with him on that. So. Do appreciate that. Um, treasury reports are out there, November, December. Thank you to CJ for all her work. Um. So that's great. And uh, she did tell me that she's willing to work with us for another year.
Nice.
Yes.
Oh, yay.
Yeah.
And we, we have a clerk for next year, too.
Not kidding, you know her.
Um, all right. So that's reports received consent agenda. Um, the math curriculum is in there, the humanities curriculum from before. That we said we wanted a little more time. Um, I wanted to point out uh, anticipated, unanticipated revenue. Um, thank you to Sohegan Valley Dental, Douglas and Jane Bab, Babcock. And the Do Good Charitable Trust, they each gave five hundred dollars to support the Robotics Club. Um, Oleander Jameson Trust with fifteen thousand dollar donation to support hype. Which is fantastic and a wonderful art donation from Cindy Velvet. So. Greatly appreciated from all that. Uh, so any questions on the consent agenda items? And I have a motion to approve. Oh, sorry, Pim. Yes.
I don't have a question. I just have um. Comment and then a couple of corrections.
Yeah.
Comment on the Argentina field trip proposal and the bane in my existence.
Executive summary was there?
Yeah, except there's no title on there.
I went hard on the executive summary. I said, Mike.
Everything else was great.
Yeah.
The title. I'm like, what is this for?
We went, we went executive summary.
Yes.
All right. And it's the last time you're ever going to hear about from me about that.
Have a chance to be right.
Well, I mean.
Sending you.
I'll be texting.
With title and executive summary.
You and Mike get messages from me, too. All right, um, and then um, thirteen to fourteen, which is January third and tenth.
Yes.
Draft minutes. As you'll see in.
Yeah. Those are the minutes. All right.
I'm really glad you're going to say great job.
Everything else is great.
Um, so yes, Argentina, I should have mentioned that it's signed to see another trip in plan and looking uh, to go and. Explore as has had happened in the past. Any other minute? Uh, corrections or concerns? Anything else on consent agenda with all the different items? Now, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
What makes a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Christie Peters' motions, second, Pim seconds, uh, since we're all here. All those in favor? Yeah. Any opposed? Unopposed, that passes. Thank you very much.
Just a comment, too, I guess, um, it's fine. What I appreciated in your board notes was that the curriculum documents are. Living documents and there's opportunities for changes and improvements. And I guess the question would, or not the question, the request would be, to the extent that they change, even what you might consider minor change, a notice. To the board, just for awareness, would be really, really helpful with an ongoing basis.
And I like that, like, and like, and I can talk to Mike about that, but when we have changes, put it like in a board note.
Yes.
Say, you know, we added this unit, you know, you know, not, I I like that. The more, and and Christine and I talk about this, this is this moment in time. Um, but they are, we want them to be dead. But we also want to make sure that the board is updated on significant changes because I appreciate that very much.
Well, significant or insignificant, what you, what, who considers it significant sometimes can be in the eye of the beholder.
Very much.
So if we're. Get questions as public officials about, oh, my God, did you see the thing in the curriculum? And we're not even aware of it. That's, that's a disadvantage to, to help. You know, inform people what the heck's going on.
Yeah, no, I like it. I like it in in some way to inform and keep, you know, I I like it. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Um. Committee updates. Uh, what I just want to say first is we have a community listening session. On February eighteenth from noon to two at the Amherst Town Library. Uh, we're coordinating with Amherst. Uh, school district just, we're kind of said we're focusing on budgets. And, but we'll address anything if anybody comes forward, but we'll be there from noon to two and try a different, different timeframe this time. Uh, anyone else? Any updates on building in grounds? Athletics?
Policy has some updates. There was a couple of meetings the last, since we last met. Um. Overall, we're knocking away the G policies, which was part of the five-year rolling review. So that was ongoing. Um, in addition, peppered in, there are some additional N H S B A updates. We will see those come out. In due course. Um. A couple to, one of the ones that was in the regular rotation for G policies was G C E B. I sent an email to the board members in advance of the meeting um, with some of the policy history about that. It has to do with. Depending on which policy you're looking at, it's either um, staff staffing, it's either administrative recruitment or principal search. So we are in a principal search mode, so it's something we should look at and probably discuss when we talk about our principal search process um. On this agenda. But anyway, that is also in policy committee. Um. One thing that we realized, um, we're so lucky to have um, Jessica Hinckley part of that. She's a nurse and there's a lot of medical. Policies peppered in throughout everywhere. And um, there's a series of them that um, have to do with uh, physicals and immunization requirements. And things like that. Um. And we realized that the. There's only one physical required for a student was upon entry into the system. Um, so we have some choices to make about how burdensome we want to be, um, or not burdensome, we want to be. With that piece of it. Um, so that is a, 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 a conversation that we'll need probably have at the board level. Maybe the S A U is a good place to start and see what everyone's thinking about that. Um. That's probably the real highlights. Everything else is pretty routine.
Great, thank you. Um, anyone else? Anything new going on with building of grounds? No? Yeah, okay, I think they've. I know they canceled various meetings on and off, so. Okay, anything else?
Is the, I've got one committee that was um. Any other, you make this one way back, and I never even went to the one meeting. Um, that was addressing. I believe, but sorry, um.
Educator presence?
Thank you.
That wasn't bad.
I was just telling mentally from last summer. Have you ever done anything more with that?
So, um, not, so during this, during the school year, it deemed impractical. To be able to get everybody. Out of, of, of classes or even after school just circling.
How about Saturday? Are you free, Dana?
And I've talked with Mike about having a educator effectiveness summit retreat. Three, four, five days, same time in the summer, maybe two, I really want a long time to, to bang some stuff out. Um, it is a topic of conversation, a lot in leadership team. I've instituted. Some introductory practices and some of the notions that I'm very interested in. Um, and the season's coming up, the evaluation, the nomination season's coming up. So it's very timely. But no, it was a, it was a deliberate and purposeful decision to not. And unable to expand teachers volunteer time after three o'clock to the circumstances that are impacting this district.
Perfect. That was perfect.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely perfect. Just making sure that I'm not missing anything.
Nope. I appreciate the question.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, moving on, community council. They have been very busy recently.
Yeah, we have been pretty busy recently and it's been a bit since we had a chat. I think we last met in December. So since then. Uh, we have changed the calculation for our valedictorian and salutatorian roles. Um, it was passed last year that the class of twenty twenty-two would have theirs selected by. Just regular GPA. Uh, but this year we looked at that again and decided that it should be by way of GPA because. The class of twenty twenty-three was the first class to have that as an option. Um. We did address the issue of the student school board member and their term and eligibility not really aligning with what we have in state statute. Uh, we've updated our bylaws since then, and there is a stickler in that clause about um. The fact that a term has to last a whole year, but the state law doesn't allow for it to be just a school year. Um, so there's no option for us to have all four grades vote at once if we want to have. You know, full compliance.
Right.
Um. We also removed our judiciary board from Sohegan. Uh, we have two boards that serve basically the same function. It is an alternate um, disciplinary board. Led by students and staff. Uh, if a student feels that a disciplinary action that they got was unfair or that they need to argue some point on it. Uh, they have this option to have this hearing by students and maybe get a different punishment. Um, since we had two boards and neither of them were being used very much, we've found it more appropriate to just do one. Uh, and then we also had the cell phone proposal that was highlighted in the principal's report. That was passed by community council yesterday. Uh, it was. Kind of a rough ride, but it, I think that community council was pretty agreeable with it. Um, we realized that we needed to. Set some boundaries between the students and their phones, even if it may not be as popular with our constituents to do that sort of thing. Um, in other news, Bank Fest obviously is next week. We're very excited for that. S A C has been working hard. Uh, and student handbook committee has been continuing to work diligently. So that's made of students and community members as well.
Yeah, they've, they've been busy. I I attended uh, and participated in the cell phone proposal meetings. And I have to say, you want to see student government and student, just the community in process, this was it. The kids first came in and said, you're not taking my phone away. And then there was a discussion and there was more and it evolved and it just, kids started going like, oh, and. And and the, and the teacher's participation and this, the process of the discussion. Came to this, everyone understanding and it passed unanimously. Well, there was one that abstained. But it was, the entire conversation was over three meetings, one of them being a night meeting. And I have to tell you, it was so impressive. It's awesome. It was great to see that everyone working together to come together to try and understand what is happening. So.
Yeah.
Kudos. Big kudos. And thank you for showing up to deliberative session, by the way, Ralph. That was appreciated, too. Um, any questions for community council? No? Thank you, Ralph. Uh, okay, oh, deliberative session review. I know we want to look, um. Take a look back at what worked, what didn't, things we know we need to improve or things that we need to consider for next year. Um, we do know there's one.
Yeah, it's just, uh, typically after the annual school district meeting in my last life, the next meeting, just while it's fresh. Um, I wrote about some things in board notes. Um, I, I, as I said, I had some feedback regarding a community member. And I will certainly look at seating in a different way next year. Um, so that's easy. And Mike and I both have strong notes about that next year, so that'll be good. Um, one of the things that I thought was interesting, and Amy and I have had a lot of discussion, I wrote about a little bit in in board notes when. When moderator Bauer talked about the town's ability to withhold funds, to retain funds, fund balance. Uh, over a year and the community member who was a former uh, school board chair, Conval spoke about that statute. It was a mechanism used in my, a lot of central Hampshire schools, not so much down here, but it was at the school district that I came from. Um, it was able, I left the district with over two million dollars in savings in all funds, including a tax rate stabilization fund in a very small district. That was utilized when there are fluctuations in state aid to even out the tax rate. And it's also been expanded now to use as an emergency contingency fund as well. Um, it is an enabling legislation by the state. You can, it used to be started out at two point five percent. Of a, a, an aspect of your budget, not total budget, but an aspect of your budget. I think they increased it to five percent. Uh, you can retain five percent of your budget um, uh, going forward. Um, Amy and I spent a lot of time talking about fund balance, talking about trying to shore up financial practices. And and we've spent a lot of time and it's certainly, and one of the things I like about this is the community has to vote to adopt it. And not all communities have, none of the communities will. It's what their interest is. In the community that I came from, the biggest driving force was trying to level out a tax rate. They didn't like peaks and valleys. They wanted to be able to budget, be able to understand and predict. And so we use the tax rate and cause tax, tax rate stabilization fund. To, to meet those needs of the community, to even them out. And and what helps communities is they're very used to towns have this. And I think when Amy and I met with Amherst. They had six million dollars and they used a million, million dollars this year to reduce taxes. And they still had six million dollars in the bank. So imagine if we had, you know, five percent of, uh, this is a twenty million dollar budget, so we couldn't get there. Um, if you put a little limit, but there's no pressure um, on us, but there is a willingness. Because that came up to, to respond to the community in next year, when in preparation over the summer, we could talk about that and we could, if you wanted us to dig in a little bit, of course, with Mike's support. But the more we can do to shore up financials and even out the tax rate. Um, it's something that we're looking in, in with Mount Vernon. Mount Vernon this year had spikes. And and expenses that if we had uh, ability to have some more revenue, um, then that could even out that as well. Um, and we've talked a little bit about it with Amherst, just export or again, no pressure. But I think there's a little bit of an opening at the deliberative, when a community member suggests it, it gives us an opening to their. And investigate only if you so desire. I mean, Amy and I have plenty of projects to do. Um, but the ability to withhold funds is enabling legislation that currently there isn't any district in the S A U thirty-nine that's available themselves with that.
When, when it comes to. Retaining funds for trusts and, and uh, reserves, like, the only. Hesitation I have is that's money you've taken out of the economy. I could have invested that money myself, but it could have been spent in the economy. When you get it to six, seven million dollars, it's pretty significant for. A Southern New Hampshire economy, so. To me, it's, it's. You balance that out with. You know, the community interest on top of it.
Absolutely fair. And we would never get there. There's as much limit on schools that that's the town side, but absolutely.
I, my, my reaction is um, kind of with Dan, I mean. We plan for the unexpected now through our capital reserve funds and that has. A purpose behind it that has, that's supported by a plan, by diligence, by. Data as opposed to just people's money for what exactly? I mean, yes, things can break, but we don't have bridges collapse and trees falling and complete catastrophic stuff that typically, I mean.
Thing you'd have to do if you have a tax cap, but.
Yep.
If we had a tax cap.
No, it was out of interest. We've got plenty of stuff to do.
I mean, I don't, yeah, I have a hard time. Just my gut says, I don't know sure about.
Kind of like to know more about it, but I wouldn't make it a priority.
Fair.
Limited time.
Now, but having better, more plans like the tech plan this year and and. Taking some surplus, which we, which does get funded out of revenue, right? We can't do special projects with that, but. You know, that, that could be a good way to approximate the same result, but with, with a persuasive case. Um, I'd be interested in that.
When, when we have a plan for, when we know what things are going to be obsolete in a certain period of time or within a certain period of time, that can help. Kind of level the tax, basically have a technology fund and and stuff like that, because we know it's coming and. Um, but to just have it there as, you know. But to just have it there as, you know, a maybe if we need it somewhere down the road, rainy day fund. Depending on how big it gets, it can be a little.
Fair. I appreciate the discussion.
I, I was just going to ask Amy to just put together maybe a brief. I don't know if it's going to be a packet or just a pros, cons, just so we have good information to base on. We can still come to the conclusion, it's not the right way to go, but I think. We don't know enough about it to say yes or no.
That's fair. Yeah, that's fair. I'm with that. Yeah.
All good. It's good to learn. Thank you. Appreciate the conversation.
And if we had a good basis for it, maybe it would be something to consider. So.
Yeah. Just to have more information to make a decision on.
Yes.
That's my thought.
And ask community folks about.
Other thoughts on deliberatives?
I, I have two.
Back, yes.
One thing we didn't say, but. And then nobody asked really about it, but our groundskeeper ask and our trainer ask. Those costs for those positions are really offset by contractor costs that we're already paying. It's, it's in addition to headcount, but to an extent, I mean, we don't pay our contractors benefits. But we probably pay them more cash than we were going to pay our, our employees. Typically, that's the way it works with contractors. There's an, it's, it's not, it's adding headcount, but there's, but there's a corresponding reduction in our.
Yeah, I mean, the, the ground, the groundskeeper is more than a groundskeeper. It's a groundskeeper to help with a groundskeeper, but. There's only so much work and there is need for other maintenance.
Yes.
So it's where, where the contractor we pay now to maintain our fields is just for that only, and they don't come back in and do other work. Where we have to have the benefit to have that person to come do more.
Right.
If they were a full time.
Conceptually, we're, we're, we're eliminating the need for certain contractors, which is, helps offset the cost.
There is an offset.
Okay. And then the other thing. What we did after the meetings, after the deliberative, we had our own meeting and just for the public record, we voted on the amended tax cap. And we voted zero, seven against. I don't want to speak for the board, but I think we were all of the same mind that although the amendment. Effectively made it. Not super effective because no one's going to raise their budgets, I mean. A hundred percent, but the concept of having a tax cap on our books is, is. Is not something that we were for. At least that was my rationale. I presume that's the same for everybody else.
We're still required to have the public hearings for it?
Yes.
We'll see how lengthy those are.
We'll see who shows up.
Oh, I hope.
And might be very short.
Oh, I hope so.
That's my, that would be my gut feel. They're going to be short, but we still want to say we are not for. The warrant article about the tax cap.
Right, as we voted the other day.
Better remind.
Thank you. Anything else? For next year?
Thanks, it helps. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll talk again as we approach the public hearing and the reception next year. I mean, assuming we're elected. Yes.
Oh, I got a question. I'm just looking through my notes. One public asked the question. You know, for the tech fund was with respect to the tax fund, but it may have applied to all of them. He said, why not an expendable trust versus a capital reserve? And your answer, Steve, was an advice of counsel.
Yeah.
So. I, I don't.
Use, how you.
Could you kind of put some context around that?
They, they don't act that way. Two different types of funds. So I, I don't know. It was just a, a, a revision to what we had had earlier.
We sent the article to district council and came back, changed it to this manner, use this language.
That's essentially the, the name difference. Yeah, and, and that's, and we're doing that out of practice.
We're doing it anyway, yeah.
So. More transparent to have a public hearing prior to requesting the fund.
Okay, i- is there, are they different in terms of where they can be invested?
That's, that's what I heard that night. I did not know that.
That I have not learned in my.
Me either.
My, that was study.
Come from the trustee of trust funds, but we probably understand that.
Right.
And availability of. And whether it has to be available.
Regulations around.
Right. Long term.
Right. No, not so much.
Oh, you just wouldn't want. I mean, if you have an opportunity to invest, you would want to. We just want to take your liquidity away and something that's, you know, turned five year term and you need the money faster. But if you don't need it all right away, then you, you should invest it in something low risk. I mean, why wouldn't you not?
I used to, in my past life, every once in a while, go to the meeting with the trust funds. It's kind of fun.
Yeah, and they came to us the one time.
They did.
Over all the different.
A lot of suits.
Yeah.
And they were encouraging us to use our, our funds. Yeah.
Yes, so we need to maybe be in touch with them.
I am.
Yeah.
I am regularly.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. No, I receive.
Yeah, monthly reports.
Monthly reports and I always give them a heads up when we're going to be sending over.
All right. So we could, we can ask more, John, if you're.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in learning more about the investment.
Well, we have these choices and if we're going to. Save money based on plans and stuff and not do a, just keeping stuff for people without a purpose, then maybe we should really know what that means and. And I, you know, councils has their reason. I'd like to know the basis for that, for that opinion.
Me too.
You know what I mean? And, and, and what our options are and if we agree, then the great and maybe certain funds, we do it differently for, for some reason. And ignorance isn't helping here.
We've got attorneys coming to the public hearing for the tax cap. While they're there, I'll ask. I like, I like the double dipping. Did a lot of that during.
And if we want fifteen minutes, I don't know what next month meeting might be, but if we have someone from the trustee of trust funds, if it makes sense, if it makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
So all those lists while they're getting paid anyway. Hopefully sitting there doing nothing but chatting with me.
Yes. And hopefully short time. Okay.
Sorry, it just occurred to me, one more of the feedback, just observation. And it happened at all three deliberatives. I mean, it's a powerful room, that legislative body. All petition warrant articles were amended significantly. Rendering them inert. Same could happen to our proposals. There's nothing stopping that. So we should remember that. I mean. You know, we better have our ducks in a row and our arguments well played out to the diligence. Eyes eye and t's cross and all that to, to make a persuasive case so we don't fall victim to, to similar sentiment.
Yeah, and just remember, there's, I think, for, we have the two public hearings. One's February twentieth at six here.
Monday and Wednesday.
And then Wednesday, the twenty-second, Mount Vernon at five.
And I do, I need a core.
Yes, and so I, when I originally made the, asked you guys, and I go back to my list, we literally had like, like five, I think, each night.
Just need a core.
So. I'll double check what those lists are, but please show up if you can, because we're cutting it close with every, with both of them.
We don't need seven.
We, we need four. We need at least four. They'll get, they're probably posted just like every other public hearing.
They are. They're legally posted meetings.
Yeah.
If I have to attest to that, I can.
Yeah. But at this point, like you said, because it was raised a hundred percent, I'm not sure if anyone's going to show because they are just information sessions only, but. We have to have them, so we will. Okay. Principal search.
Sure. So Mike and I met. And talked about putting together a draft process. And so the position has been posted. We've had, we have four applicants already, which is exciting and wonderful. So the, so the, right now, and, and as Mr. Glover talked about the policy stuff, right now, the, the policies GCV says the. Superintendent must present a draft of the process to the board. I had, I acted under that policy last year when I did a principal search in Amber's School District and did something very similar to this. It's a little bit different process. Mike has reviewed this and we, and we spoke about that. So. The first part would be a paper screening. And that would be with Mike and whoever he, support he would like from the central office. And he is interested in having a, a long, one of the, you know, an original founding member of South Hegan faculty join him and going through the paper, just looking at profiles. As, as Stephanie and I spoke about having someone long-term here and, and Mike here screening and just trying to look at that stage, we think is a good thing. And then depending on that, getting that. Mike and central office support, whoever he would like to, would do a screening interview. And I'll be completely transparent. This is something that I, I did with, with Christine and others in Amherst. I did it by myself in my last job. The, this, not superintendent nominating a building or district level administrator to the board. Is a very, very important piece. All of there are the teachers, but everyone is, but certainly that level of leadership is very, very important. My, my view was that I interviewed. I did phone interviews, seven o'clock at night with as many as I thought would be possible. Usually sometimes when I did fifteen and it would always be at seven, seven, seven thirty, I did them at night in my home and I asked certain questions and I. Did not want to let, get anybody through my screening unless I felt more probable than not that they would be a fit for the district, for the school. So. It was my decision at that level to get through because it is superintendent's nomination. It is, and I fully expected, and I fully expect now, and I did last year when I spoke to the Amherst Board, to be evaluated my, just my ability to hire people. Mike understands that. It's not, it, it's a little bit of a funnel, but it's not super tight. For example, when I said this to Stephanie, well, I once interviewed a principal and I, one of the questions I always ask people and Dana knows, we spent, and Amy and Christine knows, we spent. We spent over a couple hours talking about how we move people as administrators. And it was one of the first meetings that I had as your interim superintendent with the entire leadership team this summer was, how do you move them? My expectation is, as your interim superintendent, my expectation of you is that I move people. And we talk about that. So I, one of the questions I asked for any leadership position in Hoppy School District was how do you move people? I had one sitting principals that I, the way I move people is through budget allocation. Someone agrees with me, they get more money. If someone doesn't agree with me, they get less money. I did not send that person forward. And that's someone like, I wouldn't even know on paper. They had the credentials and they had the experience, but their orientation to moving people wasn't relationships. It wasn't modeling behavior. It wasn't. You know, in discourse, it was using the budget as a weapon to support or punish. And that was accepted in that reality. And that's, so it was that obvious stuff that I wouldn't send through. And so, and Mike and I talked about that. Mike has done screening here. He has his hiring, so it's not foreign to him. I'll be completely honest, I was much more of a single person superintendent and hop than I am here. Christine and I screened together, so it wasn't just me. We did it together. And sometimes we sat in our room, it was kind of funny in my little office. So it was the old office back then, so. So Mike and he, if Mike wants support from Amy, from Christine, from me, or all of us, he's going to work that out. So that's a screening. And then it goes to round two. And Mike's vision of the round two is very similar to his round two when he was. So he brought some of his experience when he was hired as a principal here, which he had a rotational. Day, he met with teachers, he met with community members and he met with students and rotated. So that would be part of that day. So it goes for, imagine something like he's, Mike's going to screen. Paper, twenty, ten, five, and the five go through the rotation.
Just approximate.
Total, no, it is not pigeonholed at all. It's just very much as, as Amy knows, I'm a big ish person. So this is a giant. This is totally ish. I should have put ish next to all that because the, the quality of the candidate drives everything. Five doesn't, seven could be, could be three. We don't waste everybody's time. And then out of that, Mike would, Mike would get feedback from the faculty group, the community group and the students. He would be the conduit to that. And he would look at all that and see, and hopefully there's a nice consensus in two or three. Then we do site visits. And his vision of the site visit, he would go with a school counselor, with one of the deans and a board member. You would go visit Hoppy High. And visit, you know, or you go visit. Sign, high tech high in California, so we all get, I'm just kept. But that would be the vision. So this is Mike's and then you appoint. And try to appoint by a, a certain amount of time so they can, so the new principal can be involved in hiring the most critical positions. You know, like the school counselor is a big one, right past. I apologize for that. So this is, so we thought we had enough balance of traditional South Hegan Community Board. Mike, his responsibility, getting help when he needs it, as well as a site visit. So that was the goal, but I, I meant to put a giant watermark draft on it, but I forget, forgot that.
So, okay, so I mean, my, my quick thoughts are I'm good with the screening, like the upfront screenings. Because if there's someone that Mike as superintendent is not comfortable working with. I don't think we need to bother with seeing even on paper. It doesn't make sense. So to me. That's where we start. Then you start with the interview. So I just want to be curious where other people's thoughts are on this approach.
I support it. That's, I use, I use a similar technique when I hire people.
I respectfully disagree. The Sohigan policy that was changed in twenty twenty-one was adopted in nineteen ninety-one before the doors opened. And was ratified or reaffirmed in twenty thirteen. That policy was a founding, could be considered a founding document for the most important position. One we could argue from the entire school. And that process had the board involved in this, in. The, the policy said that the board would receive, the superintendent would provide all applications to the board. So that the board could look at all applications. I think we need to do that. And that allow, what that does, the benefit of that is that allows any board members. To ask questions of the, of Mike as, as the incoming superintendent. And affirm his decision-making and understand his decision-making. And he says, I got rid of this half and there's another half and, and everyone says, oh, I see that. And he has his reasons and rationale. Then we can support him and he gets confidence from that. If, if we don't have that process, we don't even know who is putting their name out there. And I think that's, I think that is a mistake. I think the community expects us to be more involved. And in order to build trust with our superintendent involving us, this will go a long way to do that. So I would like to see that aspect of our prior practice reinstated.
Your, your thought is we see every single application?
Yes. Now, it doesn't mean, doesn't mean any particular board, but every application that is received is delivered to the board. Now, as an individual board member.
We're in the plus.
Well.
Are you talking from the beginning or?
You receive, no, before this, before anything is screened out.
So I'm just, I'm just going to make one comment and I'll let other students, but I'm going to say. If the superintendent makes a phone call and has a conversation with the applicant and they, and that they say this is not someone I'm going to bring forward, I'm not going to override superintendent.
That's.
And I don't.
Problem.
That's my gut feel, but I'm. I think where we're being inserted in the interview process to me makes sense. I, I don't, I don't need to see every single application from the get-go. I think that's something I need to. Put as the responsibility of the superintendent for what they bring forward to us.
Where do you see that line?
The nineteen ninety-one plus two thousand thirteen Sohigan Cooperative one. Paragraph one, second sentence.
So for me, that's a staff. Me, that says staff recruitment is responsible to superintendent, principals and other staff will assess. So.
No, it's the attachment that has the date nineteen ninety-one in it.
Yeah, that's the one I've got here. So.
Oh God, did I mislabel? It's. If I did, that was my.
You've got two, twenty twenty-three, nineteen ninety-eight plus one. You've got a word document that shows August of ninety-one.
It's one of the PDFs.
October thirteen.
It's. Oh goodness. I don't have my computer with me to work that out.
Are you saying the one, all applications will be screened by the superintendent and a number selected for interview by the superintendent and the board or its designated community?
Yes.
That's not all of them being screened.
Yeah, read rescindence. All applications will be screened by the superintendent and a number selected by the board.
No, and a number selected for interview.
A number of applications will be selected for interview.
By the superintendent.
Not a number of.
And a number of applications will be selected by the superintendent and the board. Yes.
I guess I read it different, but. But so my problem with it though is that if I understand it correctly, we voted to override this policy.
We did.
We were.
All of you did.
Okay, so, but we, we have policies that are current and they're the policies that.
Okay, so but we we have policies that are current and they're the policies that the community can expect we're going to. Govern by and and be held accountable to and I. I have a problem going back to a policy that is no longer on the books as our. Um, threshold for how we're going to behave, there's a lot of um. Water under the bridge.
So I was just gonna say, I was one of the members that voted against the policy being changed and the reason was um. Because my concern was that their superintendent would just come and give us advice of how they're going to. Conduct the interviews, but there was nothing that said we could approve or disapprove of it or anything else. What I am seeing right now from Mike and Steve in this presentation is that we are being included. In a place where we get to enter be set in that first round of actual interviews. So because I am seeing that and we are included in that. I'm okay with how this is being implemented right now, I'm not going to go and try and change this policy at this point right now because. I can't hold up this process over that.
I I agree because you know, this is separate, I mean, we kind of learned a lesson, I think in the superintendent search maybe a little bit. But to me, that was because the superintendent, we would be the ones working with the superintendent, so we would have. You know, to to have, give us a little bit more say might have been okay in that process and I'm, you know, I think we still have discussions. To be had if if the process comes up again, but this is something that. We're hiring somebody that superintendent has to work with and to give them the first bite of the apple and say. These are the three or four that I think I can work with. I think that's fair in this process and to to present to us. Um, those three or four for for interviews would, I think that's fair. And I would, I would support.
I mean, if we want to change the policy, that needs to go back to policy committee, but I'm not going to change the policy right now.
Well, you don't have to change the policy, I'm arguing we changed the plan, right now, the board is, it comes in at step three. The paper screening.
To go against our policy, but.
I'm not saying to go against the policy, saying we influence the plan.
See every single application. Are you going to tell the superintendent, you just, you don't want to bring that person forward, but I'm telling you, you're going to.
Never, probably.
Then I don't need to see.
What I would like to, the question I'd like to be able to ask and have a conversation with the superintendent about is. Okay, we got, I don't know how many applications we're getting, let's just say for the sake of argument, we get ten. And um, and the superintendent says, okay, of this ten, in the paper screening, I got rid of these five. And I as a board member can can look at the five and can say, oh, I see blah, 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 and the superintendent can say, yeah, but I da, 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 da. And these are my reasons and rationale and I could say, oh, you know, okay, now I understand what your thinking is, now I understand. What, how you're making your decisions and I can support you. Cause you've demonstrated it to me, if I don't have the information to be able to compare against, to be able to have a conversation with, then I I'm I'm blind. And it's blind trust. That's why I would like us to be able to receive, now any individual board member, if you don't care, you don't have to look at those those resumes, you can do blind trust if you want to do it. That's your choice as an individual.
So I think the current policy is sufficient, I think the process is sufficient. What I would suggest maybe to help with alleviate some of John's concerns is. I know that there's a job description, but maybe if you can. Bulletize it or whatever and say, these are the top things that I'm looking for in a candidate. So that's what you seem to be concerned with, right, so if you know what he's looking for. And what do you have to look at every resume?
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I could ask Mike, no, that's great. Um, I'm very, he has, um, I think he has a great understanding of uh what a successful candidate would be.
By the way, for the record, so do I, um, I think he's fit quite well here in our, with our cultural diversity as as it is. Um. It isn't about Mike, this is about. A process where I think their community expects the uniqueness of Sohegan to be well represented on its board. And I think there's been a move in the past five years under different leadership. To um consolidate power in the superintendent's office at the expense of the board. And I think that's led to some some challenges. Um, and some ignorance on the part of board members and this is one instance where that's the case, there are other instances. I think as well, I mean, we've talked about those in coming meetings, but um. So I I want to, the board, I would like to see the board be a a true partner with the leadership. And in order for that to happen, there has to be exchange of information. So I would encourage Mike to voluntarily then. Uh, provide the applications and if no one else is interested then to me. And so I can see what he's saying and so that we can have a meeting of the minds and I would fully expect to give him two thumbs up. And a pat on the back, so.
So you're asking personally to see the applications, that would, I just.
Well, that that would be sufficient for me. Okay, I I think we would all be beneficial to benefit from the opportunity to review that information.
So my real concern is from an HR standpoint, these are people's personal resumes and things and if if there's not a chance that they're going to be a good fit for the school. That's putting a lot of information out that. Seem seems like a lot considering what our policy is.
I I'm thinking about executive searches that I've seen personally and it's usually um, you you have. The person, the immediate report, or the person that is going to be doing the hiring, doing the work with that person. They're the ones that do the initial screenings and you might send two or three candidates to their supervisor. But at at this level, I don't know that you would necessarily send every resume, you know, if you're you're hiring a. A controller or something in in an office, you wouldn't necessarily send every resume to the CEO. Even though you might want the CEO to to sign off on your your final two candidates. Um.
Yeah, I I guess John, what I'm trying to understand is what your vision of your role as a board member in terms of the oversight and hiring of an employee. Because statutorily, we have one employee, right, it's our superintendent. What I'm hearing you say is that you want to also have oversight over the hiring of a principal for this building. What my question to you is, is what's the difference between a principal and maybe a social studies teacher? Or an athletic director or a substitute teacher, a paraprofessional, at what point do you start to. Recognize where our defined lines as board members are and rely upon the experts that we hired educators to run the system?
It's a good question, in my opinion, this is for, this is specific for principal. Our old policy was about the principal, but nobody else in the building, wasn't about teachers, wasn't about deans or assistants and associates of anything. Um, and and no, as an individual, I have no power to hire anybody, even a superintendent, only that, only only that happens with with the SAU board action. This board doesn't have any power to hire or fire anybody. No individual member does and neither does any, does this board particularly, that doesn't change. This is a, this is, this is geared towards deepening the relationship between between the community. Vis a vis the, it's elected people, us, and the administration. You know, and there's, there's competing interests there sometimes and and their culture and um, I think being a part of the the. What I would can argue is the most important job, the principal, as the leader, the one who's going to continue to do the hiring and firing, the one who, what whose vision is going to be important. Not not just to us, but but to the community at large, a lot of people invest a lot of time and and um. And belief and faith in Sohegan and what it stands for and so our job is to order, make sure that is preserved. And in this particular role, um, significant board involvement is warranted for those reasons.
Have to ask, is there a motion in here somewhere?
Yeah, I want to make one comment and then I think we need to say whether we're going to approve this process or not, one and. My one comment is, for me, the appropriate place for the board to be involved is right in the interview process. When the actual candidates that have been screened come forward and that's where our involvement starts. And that's in here already, I am happy with him bringing forward the candidates that they're like, you're on even step and foot in the building for an interview. That's what I see.
I I respectfully disagree, I think where we come into this play is as any other equal member of our community and the seat that they have. Right, so if I'm a parent.
Well, that's where we are in this interview.
I I believe that we should get no special sort of place at the table because we are just a board member. Right, so this decision is the decision made by our school executive.
Right.
One that we hire, one that we are putting our trust in to run the system in the most effective, efficient and proper way. Based on the criteria that we set as board members to our policies and our procedures. And so when we take a look at us as board members, my voice should be no different than taxpayer Jane from Mount Vernon who lives on Beach Hill Road. That says, hey, I want to have say in 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 the hiring of our new principal. I would like to sort of see their vision, I'd like to understand what they're going to do for for our community, they can come to our community forums like it's been outlined. They can go ahead and reach out to our superintendent, they can reach out to you as a board member saying, hey, can you pass along this message? Do I need to see and have a special seat at the table where I get to see resumes and applications that no one else has, I don't see that as our role, I don't.
I mean, I have no problem if that's what Steve outlined, cause he's got other community members, faculty, people being involved at a certain point. I don't, I don't have a problem with this, but and it doesn't look like the whole board is coming in to to those steps, right? The only time the board is really coming in is April sixth, when we have a special board meeting where we'll all be here. And hear whoever they're presenting and say yes or no.
But the board has a a piece in that group doing the interviews.
If the the candidates that come to us are like. Completely unqualified, I have no problem with throwing a hissy fit and saying, we gotta get.
We got a problem.
Yeah, we got a problem here and we need to go back to the drawing board and we should be maybe a little.
But I I.
I don't think that'll happen, so.
Yeah, I I don't think it's appropriate for us to be every single.
Mike will not bring forward candidates.
I I believe you're correct and Stephen, we do have a special place at the table because we. May not elect the superintendent's nomination, that general public cannot do that. So as a board action, we can reject the nomination.
Different place in the process.
Oh, yes, exactly, and the the point of what I'm arguing is so that we're embedded early in the process. So that when we come time to the nomination, we are happy to elect.
I would like to make a motion since we've had all this discussion anyway, um, that we accept. The proposed um, principal search process that has been brought to us by Mike and Stephen.
I second.
Okay, first by Ms. Peters, second by Mr. O'Keefe.
For discussion.
Yes.
Was there some question about we were going to add some things or amend it, was it a draft proposal or is this, is this, is this the proposal?
We're accepting whether.
We're gonna, we're gonna take that draft away tonight. Or were there some things you wanted to think about adding or?
No, I'm, Mike, Mike and I are are content, I bet if there was some feedback, we're, Mike open feedback, if if there are some I I ideas that the whole board wants to Mike to address, he can look at.
So our our job right now is to take that draft. Watermark away.
Yes, make it the formal plan. Yep, if you're, yep, and and I'm sure Mike will. Watch this meeting.
Um, that's just in the further discussion, um, him had raised the idea of basically a a portrait of a principal or something along those lines. Um, that was a piece of the process for the superintendent's search to figure out. So maybe Mike could do what Pym suggested as a, an addendum to the plan would be to present. Um, the leadership characteristics and and educational philosophies that he's looking for, not, not. I don't know if that needs to be amended, if it does need to be formally amended.
Was to accept that this is drafted.
So if if I could just respond to that, I think anybody that is now our new superintendent should recognize that there are seven members of this board. That may want to receive an update and see what their vision is, so Mike literally uh has been nominated to be our new superintendent, contract negotiations. That stuff should be resolved next week and he'll actually be our superintendent-elect, right, so to 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 put the proper procedure in 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 wording. He's not here tonight to share what his vision is and I think when we get to sort of him coming back or providing in writing. I think he should provide us what his vision of a new leader of this building would be. But I don't think we should modify our 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 game plan to say, he has to give it to us, I mean, as a part of just working with a bunch of. Volunteers, us, the seven of us, um, who have made inquiries in terms of what his vision of our new school leader will look like or should be. Yeah, I think normal communication, back and forth dialogue, I think any reasonable person would actually do that.
So can we charge you, Stephen, to just pass that along? Be ready for that question next time we see him.
Wrote it down.
That way we don't catch him off guard.
Right, I wrote it down, I cared, uh, I I invested in making sure that Mike feels very good.
And one more point, for the record, to Stephanie, you said the board comes in at the interview process. That's not true, that not the first interview process, there's a paper screening. Then there's a screening interview, that's the first interview process, no board involvement there either, right?
It's not interviewing, that's trying to figure out they're properly qualified.
Something on paper caught my eye, I want to talk to you, that's what that is about, so. And then the rotational day interview with everybody and their brother, so just for the record.
Thank you.
There could be an insertion of a board member listening and and supporting and and understanding what the thinking is during the screening interview. But that's also not a part of this, so.
All vote, all right, so those in favor of the draft that has been placed before us along with all the discussion that we've had. Please raise your hand if you're. Those opposed? Opposed, okay, so that still passes. Um, and we look forward to hearing from Mike about all the search. And and the bullet points of what he's looking for.
Yes.
Wonderful, okay, policies, there are policies in our packet. Um, the first. I see there's a one through eight and one through six, so when I was looking, the one, so the first one BDA, BBBH. Board organizational meeting, um, board to discuss. Do you know what that is about since Anna's not here?
Not really, I mean, I don't know that that. Policy has even been updated, I'm not sure why it's in there.
Okay, um, so we might have to hold off the next time. The BDA slash BBBH, the board organizational meeting. I'm not sure why that's on there, but and. I'll, I'll look for you guys, okay, thank you. Um, BEDH, public participation, school board meetings, um, we get, these are all first readings. So is there, are there any comments, any, any wonders? My only, my only wonder is, do we have to write the three minutes in? Or that can that be a choice?
Well, the board has the opportunity to make a motion to extend it, so three minutes is just a matter of practice, any board member can say we extended the four or five or ten.
Yeah, I think you need to have at least something in there, you can't just have it in indefinite.
The ideal situation is that this would be printed on our agenda and so members of the public would understand participation, these would be the groundings.
If you need more than three minutes, schedule a presentation.
Okay.
I I could see it being inverted to, I mean, one of our stated goals is more, more engagement with the public, better public communication. So if you inverted that and didn't and and said, the board reserves the right to limit um, comment to three minutes. Um, or the, you know, and could be invoked as opposed to extending being invoked. Um, I mean, we don't have a history of a lot of public participation at our meetings, as you can tell by the zero people of the public in our room. Sometimes we do and sometimes it's very much going to be needed, I mean, we had our COVID reopening policy, but at the heart of it, that was, that the theater was damn near full. And that was really important, absolutely.
But we rarely do we invoke the three minute policy, so.
It lets us know if.
I I appreciate the discussion point though, because it it speaks to the, how people are. Um, might feel, that they feel welcome here and they feel welcome sharing and it's the job of, I would say the chair to listen. To the public comment person and if they're going on and on and they start to repeat themselves to say, hey. I think I understand your points, recite them, do you have anything else to contribute, no, okay, thank you very much.
We will leave the three minutes in, I'm not going to argue or worry.
Let's for the first read, maybe we can all contemplate that philosophical approach to treating our public with respect and come back at the second.
That's disingenuous as well, because it assumes that we are not treating with respect, right, so this is a standard practice, a standard policy. I'm actually offended that you actually said that, three minutes is in there because it's three minutes. Every other school board around us does three minutes, Milford does three minutes, Merrimack does three minutes. If we want to go ahead as a board member and say we want more time on the agenda, we can actually do that, you have the power as a board member to say. Miss Chair, I would like to go ahead and see if we can extend it beyond, to say that we're not treating the public with respect is just, it's wrong.
Um, I don't think I said it quite like that, I think it's more, okay, point is, it's it's more respectful to do it a different way.
We're going to move on right now and we can. If there's a bigger concern, we can come back. Um, the next policy is ECAF, school bus, audio and visual, any questions on that policy? My only question on that one is, how do we notify families of this? My only question on that one is, how do we notify families of this? It doesn't say that student handbook.
Student handbook.
It is, and it's clear, and people sign off on it, so therefore they can say, yes, you should have read it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't. I have a whole list of every policy that has to be in student handbooks and I remind our assistant principals and deans over the summer has to be in it, don't forget. So.
Is this new or just updated?
Updated. Any questions? Moving on, EEA, Student Transportation. Any questions on that one? None, moving on, EEA, Video and Surveillance. Questions?
Again, just an update of an existing.
You got it.
Yep. All right, GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal History Records Check. Any question? And this was an update, please non-law. Yes. JFCJ, Prohibition of Weapons on School Property. We are supposed to rescind this one.
That because of public coming in on, on voting day?
We're seeing, can you help us on this one? Let me, let me double check.
I have a question while she's checking about the one that we just went zipping by, which is the background check.
Yes.
It sounded like Steve, you were saying, Stephen, the other, when we were having other discussions. That we only do the background check once when someone comes in, or do we repeat it? So the district I was teaching for, it was every three years. Is that abnormal? Do they just not trust us?
If, if they stay connected, it's weird, if they stay connected to us, they are good. If they leave, like, don't suddenly come back and redo it.
So that's like across the state?
But we are working on, and Dan's not here, but I think there's legislation to make a background check in line with your credential. So every three years I get recertified?
Yeah.
I think.
Maybe that's where the three years came from, because I had to do it every three years.
Statute and they, it's a desire by the school administrators, like, I really wanted one every three years.
Yeah. Things change.
Build up the capacity. Because that's a lot of people, it's a third of every teacher every year, so it hasn't moved past. I think they've done that now. So is, is that passed yet, that every three years? I think it's in legislation now.
If it had passed, it would be here.
Okay, we do typically get informed if there have been significant changes and. The Code of Conduct requires employees to.
The self-report?
Yeah. And I do have a little bit of information, it's a little convoluted. Two pieces of information, it was supposed to be rescinded a while ago. It's the bottom line, but they were still on our website. And that ASD never had the policy. Mount Vernon also has an old one from 1994. That also needed to be rescinded. And this was all. We had to go back actually to Steve Coughlin on all of this. And we were very confused, there were some policy overlaps and, and some confusion. And he has a whole long list of what happened and which policies superseded these and what occurred. So it really is these policies, we're supposed to be rescinded a while ago. Okay. Okay, this, this, this particular one made one. Yes, there were, it was JFC slash JFCJ, it was kind of two different ones that one came through.
Okay.
Okay. Questions or concerns on that one? Thank you, Dana. She made it. No, but yeah.
Yes. Dana, are you going back down to your office?
Yes.
Do you want to take cupcakes for people tomorrow?
Policy JH, Attendance, absenteeism and truancy. The weekend is already adopted, no updating, so we don't need to do any of that.
Nope.
IH, CD slash LEB, Advanced Coursework. So we, we're the only one that used to adopt this. Any questions? Earning of Credit IK, we need to adopt. Any questions there? Nothing, IKF, High School Graduation, so he can adopt. My question on this one, because they're looking at high school graduation requirements, we're going to revise this again.
We are. No, we got it.
Because we need the updated.
Yeah, we need it updated.
Okay.
Make sure.
Okay.
So, so on that. Will the policy rec, update recommendation, another one, will it become forthcoming in?
Yes.
Weeks or months or?
I, you know, I, I, I don't know exactly the timing, they're doing a, a lot of process stuff. But it's, I, I'm probably in the fall. And then we get to figure out how long, usually you only do it for like the freshmen.
Yeah.
We keep this one, you know, and it rotates, if you go to 24, you don't change the rules for senior.
Yeah.
So this will be in place and phased out typically. I haven't, Mike and I haven't talked, I have some strong feelings about graduation requirements, so I'm looking forward to having discussions.
So are there changes in the graduation requirements in this policy?
Not significant, I took, compared them side by side, we did a lot of cleanup with this policy around format.
Okay.
Clarity, and this did go to parentship in this.
No, I really like it. I, my big thing is New Hampshire history, I thought we didn't have that in there, so I was wondering if that was in the policy but not other places? Or if it was not in the policy yet? I'm a little nuts about it.
Any other questions on that one? All right, IKFC, Alternate Diploma for Students with Significant Cognitive Disabilities. I have a question, this is just a processing. Did they ever have, I'm not seeing like kids graduate on stage with, or other seniors? Do we ever think about inclusion? On that, this is where.
They don't work?
No.
Yeah, I've seen some.
Have they? Have they? Okay, then I, then it's not, then it's been before my time.
Oh, good. I, it's, so it's before my time of.
Oh, yeah.
Being around.
Correct, mostly they, they typically.
Yeah, I have not seen.
Typically don't want twice, typically don't.
Him and I have been. Oh, good.
Multiple kids.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yep.
Before my time. So hopefully I will see that.
Oh, this had to, oh, there is a typo on this one.
Is that one without the, the, at the top?
That's the most significant scrutiny there is, the whole reason why we did the policy.
It says number 22, but the wording says 21.
Yeah, that's it, that's the problem. It's got to be 22 to 22.
On page.
Because that's why we changed it to align with 22.
Yeah.
But we'll fix it, no problem.
Yeah.
No, 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 none of that. We're good, we're solid.
We can still adopt, just change with the.
Yep, as, as amended.
So. That's a small, that's, that can be, yeah. IMBC, Alternative Credit Options. Oh, on page, page 326. Let's build in yellow, there's something which is kind of yellow highlighted.
It's asterisk for ILBA. That's probably the update, yeah.
Is there anything that needs filled in there or just?
Yeah, I'm supercharged.
Okay.
I'm like crazy, I'm like crazy charged.
We're finishing up here too.
Oh, you beat me.
Last one, JFC, Student Discipline and Due Process. We are, we just need to rescind that one. So those are the policies that are on here. Again, it's a first read. So we will bring them forward.
Yeah, right, and I want to look into the same question. Unless Christine can have, why the resend? Is this another one like before that? That the tenants of the policy got folded up into some other policies? And anyway, it's in my notes to look at for the next read.
You don't know what the ECA. Yes.
There's just that last one of the JFC, Discipline and Due Process. It's tagged for rescinding and I can't look it up because I don't have my computer, but. It's kind of the same question as before with the one to resend, like, oh, duplicative or it's captured somewhere else or whatever. Okay, thank you.
I bow. Yeah. The number's right, the wording was wrong. Any other questions that there were used to be here before? Okay, so we'll bring those forward next month for second read. Policy JEC, Board Rescind Policy JEC, which is Change of Class or School Assignment. As recommended FY22 due to adoption of JCA.
I can, I can speak to that. I compared the two during our recent hearing and there are conflicts between them.
Right, it was a problem.
Yep, so better that we have JCA, I think it's more comprehensive.
Yes, so we gotta get rid of JUC then I.
So can we rescind that now? Do we have to have two meetings on that?
We can bang it out right now.
Okay. Pim has left the room, although we still have quorum. I don't know if it matters to me.
We can continue and put, just put an asterisk on that.
Well, the only thing that's left is any public input.
Oh, okay, then I got a comment on JCA.
Yes.
JCA has a requirement that we will. Turn around our decision seven days from the hearing, and that is unreasonably short. There's no statutorily requirement for time. Everything else is 15, 30 days, 45 days. Well, I, or 15, so here's the problem. We don't have the transcript. It would be really helpful to write a decision with the transcript available. So what, I don't know what the timeline is to, to get a transcript, but we should at least have five days after that. At a minimum. You know, so that we have the complete record in front of us before. To aid us in our, to, to write the decision, you know? I mean, that's just one practical reason to wait. It's another practical reason, not to wait. Wait to have enough information. Another practical reason is it took significant effort to turn that thing around in seven days. And just because I participated in that and it was, it was no small feat. So. Uh, maybe we can bring that up next time or make, making, amend that right now, so. I, I don't know, how long did it take to, to get the transcript figured out?
Oh, to get the transcript?
Yeah, back.
And today, how long until you?
But you had it out in. This place words and then I sent back.
So we could have had it, so, I didn't know it needed it.
Well, did we need it? I mean.
Not three days, but.
The, uh, the urgency initially, like for us, and I really appreciate the board taking this on, I mean, the. Some of the times are urgency if the student is in the school.
Yeah.
Well, because there's no reason why you could have compelling reason to do it faster, but I don't know why you put yourself in a box in the first instance.
Yeah, I'm with you.
You know what I mean? If it said 30 days and it's like, oh man, we need this in like a week because of all these reasons, I think the board members would work hard to get that done.
Timeline, if I can amend the policy, we've had unique experience to live under it, maybe now you know how to amend it, bring it back to policy.
Yeah.
I think it's a bad thing.
I, I would say a, a few more days would be nice, 10 or 15, I think is about most, but it would have been nice to have had. Just a few more days.
Yeah, I think so too. And, because it got done, done. And really wasn't a lot of time for everyone to really kind of think their teeth into it and use about it and really provide some feedback. So that, that would only strengthen the, the decision at the end of the day if people had a little bit more time to contemplate.
Why would, that, that one maybe, if you wouldn't mind taking that back and just suggesting that in policy.
Sure.
But I think we need to rescind JEC. Now, so there's no confusion between JEC and JCA, which are conflicting right now. So can I have a motion?
To rescind J E C.
Motion, I have a second. 10 seconds, any other discussion? Those in favor?
Excellent, thank you. That helps.
Okay. So I just want to do a public input, two of two, there's nobody here. Is there anyone online?
There was someone online.
Do you have any, any thing they would like to?
Yes, we have one person attendance without a handout.
Okay, if they have a question or would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Anything in the comments? More of that question wise?
Nothing in the chat.
Okay.
Okay, do not see them raising their hand and it is someone we know, so they would know how to do it. So that's it, we do have a quick non-public, under, is it, is C the right one?
C is.
C is the right one. All right, so under RSA 91 dash A colon 32C, can I have a motion, please?
Make the motion.
Second.
Um, what, what is the, Steve, what, what is the rationale for contract negotiations? Or contract, is there, is that C or is it something else?
Usually for a contract, you do a non-meeting.
It would be non-meeting.
Definitely for negotiations, we do non-meeting.
All right.
Is it rotational?
Call to go into non-public.
Okay.
Hey, John, just a good roll call to go on public.
Glover, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes. All right, what's going on on public?